Call it to order at 4:00 PM and start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag, the United States, the republic of first stance, one nation under God, indivisible, with which we shall all.
Hey, we have trustee Gallup Moore is absent today. She's at a community college conference, so she's representing us there. And our student trustee will be joining us at 5:00. Items out of order, we're gonna take 11.2 after closed session, and we're pulling item 15.1 from the agenda. The next, we're gonna do longevity recognition. We have five people being recognized today for 70 years of service at Santa Barbara City College. Thank you, everybody. And we have two of our recipients will be, you know, recognized today, but to list them all off, we have Roxanne Byrne, 10 years of service, currently the Director of Student Equity and Engagement Programs, Paul Fleischer, 10 years, library technician, Darlene Novak, 10 years, Administrative Assistant, Octavio Robles, 15 years as a custodian, and Amy Collins, 25 years as student program advisor. So let's, let's see. Well, we'll start off today with Vice President Paloma Arnold. We'll introduce Roxanne Byrne.
Good afternoon, evening. It's my pleasure to be here today to say a few words about Dr. Roxanne Byrne. While the note on the agenda today recognizes Roxanne for 10 years of service to SBCC, her connection to the college actually spans more than 20 years. She's served our community in countless ways as a student, an hourly employee, adjunct professor, advisor in the well and CESJ, interim and permanent coordinator, and now is the directory, directory, director of Equity, Diversity, and Cultural Competency Programs. Although I haven't known Roxanne for all of her years that she's been here, I've had the privilege of working with her in many capacities over the years. Roxanne is a true visionary who always centers students in her work. And unlike many visionaries, she not only imagines transformative change, she can make it happen. Because of her vision and follow-through, Roxanne was instrumental in the development of the well, the Centers for Equity and Social Justice, and A Moja programs, including bringing those programs to the campus center. She guided the transformation of the basic needs center from a small cupboard to a portable space, and now to the incredible centers we see today at both the Cliff and Wake campuses. Importantly, Roxanne was also instrumental in establishing and expanding key initiatives such as the Dream Center, Rising Scholars, the Pride Center, housing support programs, and she works consistently and continuously to enhance and expand the CESJ. Roxanne's commitment to her programs and the students they serve is unwavering. She is continually seeking ways to improve, expand, and strengthen her areas, always with a focus on creating safe, inclusive, and supportive spaces for our most marginalized student populations. Roxanne leads with vision and compassion, and it's a true pleasure to work with her. In the words of a few of her colleagues and her team, Roxanne is a design visionary and a mental health advocate for SBCC students. She knows how to implement programs with purpose and collaborates with heart. During the last 10 years, Roxanne has dedicated her work to advance equity and inclusion at SBCC, especially with our student equity and engagement programs. Her commitment to fostering a more just, supportive, and transformative environment has been a lasting impact on students, colleagues, and the institution as a whole. Working along Roxanne has been one of the most meaningful experiences in my time at SBCC. Her guidance, kindness, and empathy for not just me, but for all the students we serve has helped me to grow not just professionally, but also personally. I truly feel lucky every single day to come into work knowing she always has my back and is cheering me on. Roxanne has created an environment that has allowed me to flourish as a person and as a professional in our department. Couldn't have asked for a better boss. I've had the privilege of working alongside Dr. Roxanne Byrne for over 30 years. During that time, I've seen her grow into courageous, passionate, and visionary leisure. She embodies the essence of equity, and her work is a testament to that commitment. She built the Center for Equity and Social Justice from the ground up, creating a vibrant, dynamic, and inclusive community where all students feel supported, welcomed, seen, and valued. Dr. Byrne is an advocate, a mentor, and a friend. She is grounded in her purpose, and her work is marked by loyalty, devotion, and deep commitment. The college is truly fortunate to have Dr. Roxanne Byrne as a part of its community. Congratulations, Roxanne.
Thank you so much. And I have two pages, but I promise one of them is for my presentation later. So I just want to say good evening and thank you so much for this recognition of my full-time service here at SBCC. I joined the SBCC community as a student 30 years ago in 1995. I navigated much of that journey as a young, single mother, fresh in recovery, uncertain about my worth or ability. I had graduated from a continuation school after being kicked out of school and being a teen runaway and really just struggling through my teen years. And when I came here, I knew nothing about the resources available to students at the college. And I used to joke that I only knew about the bathroom and the cafeteria. If it weren't for a caring and resourceful adjunct faculty member named Jan Ford, I wouldn't be standing here today. With Jan's encouragement, I trudged through my academic journey. Moving on from here, I was about to drop out, and he said, "No, you're not", and helped me through all the way my first master's degree. With Jan's encouragement, I ended up coming back to Santa Barbara City College in 2006 as an adjunct faculty member and as an intern marriage and family therapist in our health services. And that was a volunteer position at the time. We weren't paying our interns to complete 3,000 hours of service, which I did here. And I did that for about nine and a half years while also raising my young children and, again, being a mother and trying to go to school. In 2015, after finally landing my first full-time position here, I worked alongside numerous part-time, hourly, and student workers to build programs and spaces that serve what I call the heart of our student equity programs at Santa Barbara City College, including our basic needs programs, the Center for Equity and Social Justice, A Moja, Pathways Home, Dream Center, Pride, and so many more. Many of these critical programs are here today because of the love and labor of dedicated part-time staff and student workers who pour their hearts into everything that they do, making Santa Barbara City College a better place and who often don't see recognition for their service. So as I thank you tonight for recognizing my years of full-time service, I also can't let go of any opportunity for advocacy. So I'm going to ask you also to please remember the tremendous contributions of part-time staff, student workers, adjunct faculty, and professional volunteers on our campus, and to continue to explore the ways that we can also honor their service and the contributions that they make to this incredible college. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, we'll have Dean Christopher Johnson present for Amy Collins.
Superintendent President, Board of Trustees, President, members of the board. Welcome today. So 25 years ago, marked the start of the 21st century, right? We had a new century going on. But there was concerns that came with Y2K. We had some big box office hits such as Mission Impossible 2, Gladiator, Crouching Tiger, Hidden Dragon, Survivor first aired 25 years ago. Venus Williams won her first Wimbledon title. In Tiger Woods was the pinnacle of his golf game. We were enthralled with Brad Pitt and Jennifer Aniston's What Was Going On With Them. They were the iconic artists with just debuting that day with Coldplay. It was Destiny's Child, and even Eminem was just coming out then. We were also very, very much into the sim. In the middle of all this, on October 24th in 2000, Amy Collins, she started here at the city college, working as a scholarship advisor in the financial trade before coming over to work for a woman named Anne Friesley in the Office of Student Life. Since that role, you know, she began boosting our club activities, boosting club participation, clubs in general. She prepared our Associated Student Government for campus and local and state advocacy. We were doing, going through Robert's Rules trainings and attending General Assembly and attending advocacy academies and keeping an open door for questions. She just kept us going through weekly meetings and kept that ASG going. Amy also plans outstanding student awards, recognizing efforts not only in academics, but also service to the college. It includes, this includes reaching out to department chairs for nominations, gathering write-ups about each winner to add to the flyer, reserving space, ordering food, lining up speakers, sending out special invitations, reserving tables for VIPs, putting together final flyers with QR codes so guests can read about all the winners. So I can tell you a lot about Amy Collins. I could tell you she's a great wife. She's a great mom, that she is the soul of the Office of Student Life, and how it's a pleasure that I get to work with her, to come into work with her, because I know that she'll be getting to work soon. But I'll hold off on that, that Amy like Collins and just say, Amy, thank you for being so much more than a colleague. You've become a fast friend, and I don't see that ending anytime soon. So there.
I would just like, I would just like to say that I am so lucky and grateful to work at Santa Barbara City College for the past 25 years. I am reminded daily of how amazing our students and campus community are. I have a deep appreciation for my colleagues and a huge space in my heart for my students and for my friends who are more like family. My love is endless. Thank you all for being a part of my journey.
Next up, we have three resolutions on the table, and they are Resolution 19, Honoring Undocumented People's Day, Resolution 20, Honoring Indigenous Peoples' Heritage Month, and Resolution 21, Honoring Undocumented Student Success Week. Is there anything in either of these resolutions anybody wants to highlight or comment on, or else we can do a trustee black merits?
I just have a quick question. So I fully support these resolutions, but I do have a question under the undocumented student resolution. There is a phrase that says immigration status transcends borders. I'm wondering if I've, from what I understand, that's sort of a term of art, but what if there's a way for someone to explain what that actually means?
Yes. Jordan is going to do that for us.
Sorry, I wrote this out actually, because I was expecting this question. So the phrase immigration status transcends borders is really meant to highlight that human rights should not be diminished or erased because a border is crossed. So it's a common phrase that's often used in this philosophy in immigration that helps to speak to the lived experience of undocumented individuals. So it's really trying to highlight what you see is we're all humans and we should be treated equally regardless of where we go. Hope that helps.
Trustee Crandor.
I think there's a number of our community members, if not even board members, who do not know that phrase. And one concern I have is that we express things in a way that is accessible to a wide audience. So my question to you is, how would you adjust this to explain what it means so that it is not confusing to community members who don't know what it means?
Of course. So I think what the question is, is moving forward perhaps in resolutions will just be more straightforward instead of using more artsy language, if that makes sense.
Yeah, but I'm thinking this one too.
I would use exactly what I just said, is human rights should not be diminished or erased because a border is crossed.
And substitute that for the phrase?
I agree with that.
That's fine.
So somebody will need to make a motion that offers that amendment?
Yeah, if we can just motion to approve all the resolutions with that amendment, that'd be great.
I motion to approve all of the resolutions with that amendment.
Okay. All right. Do we have a second? Okay. Any other discussion? All right. If you're voting yes on the resolutions, vote yes.
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 You're voting no? Abstaining. Okay. Thank you. That was a good edit. Next, we will go into closed session. And for closed session, we have evaluation of Superintendent President and conference with legal counsel, existing litigation. And we'll return at 5:00 PM.
Back to order at 5:00 PM. And we are coming out of closed session with one reportable item. Is the recording going? We had an item on 4.4, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation with a claim. And there was a motion to approve the settlement agreement by trustee Sodder, seconded by trustee Blackmeritz. And the vote to approve was unanimous. Nothing else to report. We don't have minutes this month to report, so we're gonna go straight into 11.2, which is scrolling, Hispanic Heritage Month highlights.
And Vice President Paloma Arnold will come up and set some context and get us started.
Thank you. Sorry about that. Good afternoon again. You're gonna hear from me a couple of times tonight. So I have the pleasure today of doing a quick introduction for our Hispanic Heritage Month Celebration presentation that highlights several of our student support programs and academic departments. As an HSI, we acknowledge that all areas of our campus share responsibility for supporting Latino, Latina, and Latinx students. In recognition of this commitment, we wish to highlight several programs that were either founded to serve educationally and historically marginalized students who at SBCC have historically included Latino, Latina, and Latinx students, or have since evolved to advance that mission. To provide some context and answer some questions raised, many of the programs listed here were established through California state legislation and are funded by the legislature. They are codified in the California Education Code and Title V and can be found across colleges and universities throughout the state, having been implemented at SBCC at various points in time. For example, the Dream Center was supported through legislation, state law, and California Education Code in 2019, and funded by the legislature via the chancellor's office. The EOPS and its programs is a product of the civil rights movement and is considered one of the original equity programs in California. Like the Dream Center, EOPS Caracal Works and Next Up programs are all codified in California EdCode and Title V and are categorically funded by the state. The Mesa program originated in UC Berkeley in the 1970s and has historically been funded primarily by the state of California as well. Very recent expansions have provided increased funding and support through the legislature. The TAP program is unique to SBCC and founded in 1989. The TAP program is funded by the Unrestricted General Fund with generous support from the Foundation for SBCC as well. RAISSIS is our newest program to SBCC and is the only program funded by the two HSI Title V federal grants. Several of us in the room, in collaboration with RAISSIS leadership, are collectively working to determine how we will institutionalize the critical components of the RAISSIS program once the federal funding ends in 2026. All of these programs and departments play an essential role in advancing access, retention, support, and belonging at SBCC. Student success data was shared with the Board of Trustees in March and was also considered in the development of our current student equity plan and our new student equity plan, which you'll see tonight. In keeping with accreditation standards, we have strengthened our program review process to include greater emphasis on student support programs. We're developing stronger data-informed models for evaluating student support services and operations. Stronger data will help us better measure our program effectiveness while acknowledging that the outcomes of student support efforts are often nuanced and not easily measured through quantitative data alone. So with that, I'm gonna ask our presenters to come down. Dr. Menendez is gonna be doing her presentation on Zoom, and I have the pleasure to turn it over to Dr. Tomas Carrasco to begin our presentation.
Thank you, Paloma. How you doing? Thank you, everybody. My name is Dr. Tomas Ira-Carrasco. I'm the chair of American Ethnic Studies. I just wanna start off with what is Chicano Studies? Chicano Studies is a study of Mexicans and Latinos in the United States. We locate our political, economic, and social experience in the United States. I just wanted to amplify our accomplishments in regard to the ethnic studies requirement. I get C area seven is a three-unit transfer level ethnic studies requirement. When this happened, Santa Barbara, along with our amazing Laura Castor, Articulation Officer in our Ethnic Studies Department, we had the most approved ethnic studies courses approved in the state. And so, thank you. And so, this has been a challenge in regards to the entire state establishing, you know, a lot of community colleges are literally establishing ethnic studies as we speak. And so, I just wanted to really emphasize that I inherited, I was one of the first to get a PhD in Chicano Studies from UCSB. And so, in regards to the pipeline, right? I got my job here, and we've been able to develop a really, really strong Black Studies, Chicano Studies, Asian-American Studies, Indigenous Studies, Ethnic Studies Department for our students, right? And so, the benefits is that we all benefit, all students benefit from ethnic studies and Chicano Studies. I always give the example is when I went to Berkeley and I took my Asian-American Studies courses, I was able to learn the difference between, you know, Japanese, Chinese, Filipino, et cetera, right? So when you take Chicano Studies, like if you look at, you know, you have Mexican, Mexican-American, Chicano, Chicana. And just so you know, you know, Hispanic is a government term that Nixon created. A lot of people see Hispanic as a problematic term because it's colonial, et cetera, et cetera. Chicano, Chicana, 1521, it intertwines our indigeneity and our European-ness, 1848, our American-ness and our Mexicanness. But it's a stance. It comes out of the '60s, and it's a political statement, right? It connects us to the land, and it subverts white supremacy ideology in one word. Applause! No, I'm joking. Okay? And again, you know, I really wanna emphasize this because words have a lot of power, right? And we need to call our students what we are, right? Mexican, Mexican-American, from El Salvador, Nicaragua, et cetera, right? And our students learn from Chicano Studies, also the concepts that we teach, structural analysis, hegemony, neoliberalism. We have amazing, amazing counselors. We collaborate with EOPS in the summer, Running Start. These students take a course, they're here at Santa Barbara City College. And again, what I like to create is that we create intellectual momentum. We create academic momentum. We create educational momentum. And I love teaching here at Santa Barbara City College. Our classes are packed. They're amazing, right? And so, yeah, that's about three minutes, right? How many? Okay, yeah. So just real quick, you know, in the spirit of Cesar Chavez and just empowering students, you know, I wanna end with one of his statements is, "When social change begins, it cannot be reversed." You cannot uneducate a person who has learned to read. You cannot humiliate the person who feels pride. And you cannot oppress people who are not afraid anymore. So in the spirit and just acknowledging where we're at, you know, our students are under, our communities are under the gun in regards to being scared, you know, of the ICE raids, of what's going on, of being racialized. And it's when you give students information, they're able to be empowered. And so, I just wanna say that Santa Barbara City College has really supported our students, and most importantly, Chicanos, Mexicanos, Latinos, we are human beings. We're human. Thank you.
ESL?
Yes.
Well, after that, I guess we're kind of the beginning of that pathway, right? I mean, I think really what we want to do in ESL is to empower our students and to inspire them. So they're coming into this institution, figuring out how to navigate, and we wanna be there every step of the way to encourage them and inspire them so that they can keep going. We wanna give them a sense of belonging and to know that this is their place, they can succeed here, and they can dream here and try to move through our program and into other programs. And so, I think that, I feel like throwing this away after being inspired by Thomas. But I think that's like a key takeaway. We want ESL students to come in, we wanna give them a sense of belonging, help them with absolutely everything we can, outside of classes with student services type things, and then in classes with tutors and with good curriculum and teachers who are well educated. And so, I think that's like a key takeaway. We want ESL students to come in, we wanna give them a sense of belonging, help them with absolutely everything we can, outside of classes with student services type things, and then in classes with tutors and with good curriculum and teachers who are well educated. And so, I think that's like a key takeaway. We want ESL students to come in, we wanna give them a sense of belonging, help them with absolutely everything we can, outside of classes with student services type things, and then in classes with tutors and with good curriculum and teachers who are well educated. And so, I think that's like a key takeaway. We want ESL students to come in, we wanna give them a sense of belonging, help them with absolutely everything we can, outside of classes with student services type things, and then in classes with tutors and with good curriculum and teachers who are well educated. And so, I think that's like a key takeaway. We want ESL students to come in, we wanna give them a sense of belonging, help them with absolutely everything we can, outside of classes with student services type things, and then in classes with tutors and with good curriculum and teachers who are well educated. And so, I think that's like a key takeaway. We want ESL students to come in, we wanna give them a sense of belonging, help them with absolutely everything we can, outside of classes with student services type things, and then in classes with tutors and with good curriculum and teachers who are well educated. And so, I think that's like a key takeaway. We want ESL students to come in, we wanna give them a sense of belonging, help them with absolutely everything we can, outside of classes with student services type things, and then in classes with tutors and with good curriculum and teachers who are well educated. And so, I think that's like a key takeaway. We want ESL students to come in, we wanna give them a sense of belonging, help them with absolutely everything we can, outside of classes with student services type things, and then in classes with tutors and with good curriculum and teachers who are well educated. And so, I think that's like a key takeaway. We want ESL students to come in, we wanna give them a sense of belonging, help them with absolutely everything we can, outside of classes with student services type things, and then in classes with tutors and with good curriculum and teachers who are well educated. And so, I think that's like a key takeaway. We want ESL students to come in, we wanna give them a sense of belonging, help them with absolutely everything we can, outside of classes with student services type things, and then in classes with tutors and with good curriculum and teachers who are well educated. And so, I think that's like a key takeaway. We want ESL students to come in, we wanna give them a sense of belonging, help them with absolutely everything we can, outside of classes with student services type things, and then in classes with tutors and with good curriculum and teachers who are well educated. And so, I think that's like a key takeaway. We want ESL students to come in, we wanna give them a sense of belonging, help them with absolutely everything we can, outside of classes with student services type things, and then in classes with tutors and with good curriculum and teachers who are well educated. And so, I think that's like a key takeaway. We want ESL students to come in, we wanna give them a sense of belonging, help them with absolutely everything we can, outside of classes with student services type things, and then in classes with tutors and with good curriculum and teachers who are well educated. And so, I think that's like a key takeaway. We want ESL students to come in, we wanna give them a sense of belonging, help them with absolutely everything we can, outside of classes with student services type things, and then in classes with tutors and with good curriculum and teachers who are well educated. And so, I think that's like a key takeaway. We want ESL students to come in, we wanna give them a sense of belonging, help them with absolutely everything we can, outside of classes with student services type things, and then in classes with tutors and with good curriculum and teachers who are well educated. And so, I think that's like a key takeaway. We want ESL students to come in, we wanna give them a sense of belonging, help them with absolutely everything we can, outside of classes with student services type things, and then in classes with tutors and with good curriculum and teachers who are well educated. And so, I think that's like a key takeaway. We want ESL students to come in, we wanna give them a sense of belonging, help them with absolutely everything we can, outside of classes with student services type things, and then in classes with tutors and with good curriculum and teachers who are well educated. And so, I think that's like a key takeaway. We want ESL students to come in, we wanna give them a sense of belonging, help them with absolutely everything we can, outside of classes with student services type things, and then in classes with tutors and with good curriculum and teachers who are well educated. And so, I think that's like a key takeaway. We want ESL students to come in, we wanna give them a sense of belonging, help them with absolutely everything we can, outside of classes with student services type things, and then in classes with tutors and with good curriculum and teachers who are well educated. And so, I think that's like a key takeaway. We want ESL students to come in, we wanna give them a sense of belonging, help them with absolutely everything we can, outside of classes with student services type things, and then in classes with tutors and with good curriculum and teachers who are well educated. And so, I think that's like a key takeaway. We want ESL students to come in, we wanna give them a sense of belonging, help them with absolutely everything we can, outside of classes with student services type things, and then in classes with tutors and with good curriculum and teachers who are well educated. And so, I think that's like a key takeaway. We want ESL students to come in, we wanna give them a sense of belonging, help them with absolutely everything we can, outside of classes with student services type things, and then in classes with tutors and with good curriculum and teachers who are well educated. And so, I think that's like a key takeaway. We want ESL students to come in, we wanna give them a sense of belonging, help them with absolutely everything we can, outside of classes with student services type things, and then in classes with tutors and with good curriculum and teachers who are well educated. And so, I think that's like a key takeaway. We want ESL students to come in, we wanna give them a sense of belonging, help them with absolutely everything we can, outside of classes with student services type things, and then in classes with tutors and with good curriculum and teachers who are well educated. And so, I think that's like a key takeaway. We want ESL students to come in, we wanna give them a sense of belonging, help them with absolutely everything we can, outside of classes with student services type things, and then in classes with tutors and with good curriculum and teachers who are well educated. And so, I think that's like a key takeaway. We want ESL students to come in, we wanna give them a sense of belonging, help them with absolutely everything we can, outside of classes with student services type things, and then in classes with tutors and with good curriculum and teachers who are well educated. And so, I think that's like a key takeaway. We want ESL students to come in, we wanna give them a sense of belonging, help them with absolutely everything we can, outside of classes with student services type things, and then in classes with tutors and with good curriculum and teachers who are well educated. And so, I think that's like a key takeaway. We want ESL students to come in, we wanna give them a sense of belonging, help them with absolutely everything we can, outside of classes with student services type things, and then in classes with tutors and with good curriculum and teachers who are well educated. And so, I think that's like a key takeaway. We want ESL students to come in, we wanna give them a sense of belonging, help them with absolutely everything we can, outside of classes with student services type things, and then in classes with tutors and with good curriculum and teachers who are well educated. And so, I think that's like a key takeaway. We want ESL students to come in, we wanna give them a sense of belonging, help them with absolutely everything we can, outside of classes with student services type things, and then in classes with tutors and with good curriculum and teachers who are well educated. And so, I think that's like a key takeaway. We want ESL students to come in, we wanna give them a sense of belonging, help them with absolutely everything we can, outside of classes with student services type things, and then in classes with tutors and with good curriculum and teachers who are well educated. And so, I think that's like a key takeaway. We want ESL students to come in, we wanna give them a sense of belonging, help them with absolutely everything we can, outside of classes with student services type things, and then in classes with tutors and with good curriculum and teachers who are well educated. And so, I think that's like a key takeaway. We want ESL students to come in, we wanna give them a sense of belonging, help them with absolutely everything we can, outside of classes with student services type things, and then in classes with tutors and with good curriculum and teachers who are well educated. And so, I think that's like a key takeaway. We want ESL students to come in, we wanna give them a sense of belonging, help them with absolutely everything we can, outside of classes with student services type things, and then in classes with tutors and with good curriculum and teachers who are well educated. And so, I think that's like a key takeaway. We want ESL students to come in, we wanna give them a sense of belonging, help them with absolutely everything we can, outside of classes with student services type things, and then in classes with tutors and with good curriculum and teachers who are well educated. And so, I think that's like a key takeaway. We want ESL students to come in, we wanna give them a sense of belonging, help them with absolutely everything we can, outside of classes with student services type things, and then in classes with tutors and with good curriculum and teachers who are well educated. And so, I think that's like a key takeaway. We want ESL students to come in, we wanna give them a sense of belonging, help them with absolutely everything we can, outside of classes with student services type things, and then in classes with tutors and with good curriculum and teachers who are well educated. And so, I think that's like a key takeaway. We want ESL students to come in, we wanna give them a sense of belonging, help them with absolutely everything we can, outside of classes with student services type things, and then in classes with tutors and with good curriculum and teachers who are well educated. And so, I think that's like a key takeaway. We want ESL students to come in, we wanna give them a sense of belonging, help them with absolutely everything we can, outside of classes with student services type things, and then in classes with tutors and with good curriculum and teachers who are well educated. And so, I think that's like a key takeaway. We want ESL students to come in, we wanna give them a sense of belonging, help them with absolutely everything we can, outside of classes with student services type things, and then in classes with tutors and with good curriculum and teachers who are well educated. And so, I think that's like a key takeaway. We want ESL students to come in, we wanna give them a sense of belonging, help them with absolutely everything we can, outside of classes with student services type things, and then in classes with tutors and with good curriculum and teachers who are well educated. And so, I think that's like a key takeaway. We want ESL students to come in, we wanna give them a sense of belonging, help them with absolutely everything we can, outside of classes with student services type things, and then in classes with tutors and with good curriculum and teachers who are well educated. And so, I think that's like a key takeaway. We want ESL students to come in, we wanna give them a sense of belonging, help them with absolutely everything we can, outside of classes with student services type things, and then in classes with tutors and with good curriculum and teachers who are well educated. And so, I think that's like a key takeaway. We want ESL students to come in, we wanna give them a sense of belonging, help them with absolutely everything we can, outside of classes with student services type things, and then in classes with tutors and with good curriculum and teachers who are well educated. And so, I think that's like a key takeaway. We want ESL students to come in, we wanna give them a sense of belonging, help them with absolutely everything we can, outside of classes with student services type things, and then in classes with tutors and with good curriculum and teachers who are well educated. And so, I think that's like a key takeaway. We want ESL students to come in, we wanna give them a sense of belonging, help them with absolutely everything we can, outside of classes with student services type things, and then in classes with tutors and with good curriculum and teachers who are well educated. And so, I think that's like a key takeaway. We want ESL students to come in, we wanna give them a sense of belonging, help them with absolutely everything we can, outside of classes with student services type things, and then in classes with tutors and with good curriculum and teachers who are well educated. And so, I think that's like a key takeaway. We want ESL students to come in, we wanna give them a sense of belonging, help them with absolutely everything we can, outside of classes with student services type things, and then in classes with tutors and with good curriculum and teachers who are well educated. And so, I think that's like a key takeaway. We want ESL students to come in, we wanna give them a sense of belonging, help them with absolutely everything we can, outside of classes with student services type things, and then in classes with tutors and with good curriculum and teachers who are well educated. And so, I think that's like a key takeaway. We want ESL students to come in, we wanna give them a sense of belonging, help them with absolutely everything we can, outside of classes with student services type things, and then in classes with tutors and with good curriculum and teachers who are well educated. And so, I think that's like a key takeaway. We want ESL students to come in, we wanna give them a sense of belonging, help them with absolutely everything we can, outside of classes with student services type things, and then in classes with tutors and with good curriculum and teachers who are well educated. And so, I think that's like a key takeaway. We want ESL students to come in, we wanna give them a sense of belonging, help them with absolutely everything we can, outside of classes with student services type things, and then in classes with tutors and with good curriculum and teachers who are well educated. And so, I think that's like a key takeaway. We want ESL students to come in, we wanna give them a sense of belonging, help them with absolutely everything we can, outside of classes with student services type things, and then in classes with tutors and with good curriculum and teachers who are well educated. And so, I think that's like a key takeaway. We want ESL students to come in, we wanna give them a sense of belonging, help them with absolutely everything we can, outside of classes with student services type things, and then in classes with tutors and with good curriculum and teachers who are well educated. And so, I think that's like a key takeaway. We want ESL students to come in, we wanna give them a sense of belonging, help them with absolutely everything we can, outside of classes with student services type things, and then in classes with tutors and with good curriculum and teachers who are well educated. And so, I think that's like a key takeaway. We want ESL students to come in, we wanna give them a sense of belonging, help them with absolutely everything we can, outside of classes with student services type things, and then in classes with tutors and with good curriculum and teachers who are well educated. And so, I think that's like a key takeaway. We want ESL students to come in, we wanna give them a sense of belonging, help them with absolutely everything we can, outside of classes with student services type things, and then in classes with tutors and with good curriculum and teachers who are well educated. And so, I think that's like a key takeaway. We want ESL students to come in, we wanna give them a sense of belonging, help them with absolutely everything we can, outside of classes with student services type things, and then in classes with tutors and with good curriculum and teachers who are well educated. And so, I think that's like a key takeaway. We want ESL students to come in, we wanna give them a sense of belonging, help them with absolutely everything we can, outside of classes with student services type things, and then in classes with tutors and with good curriculum and teachers who are well educated. And so, I think that's like a key takeaway. We want ESL students to come in, we wanna give them a sense of belonging, help them with absolutely everything we can, outside of classes with student services type things, and then in classes with tutors and with good curriculum and teachers who are well educated. And so, I think that's like a key takeaway. We want ESL students to come in, we wanna give them a sense of belonging, help them with absolutely everything we can, outside of classes with student services type things, and then in classes with tutors and with good curriculum and teachers who are well educated. And so, I think that's like a key takeaway. We want ESL students to come in, we wanna give them a sense of belonging, help them with absolutely everything we can, outside of classes with student services type things, and then in classes with tutors and with good curriculum and teachers who are well educated. And so, I think that's like a key takeaway. We want ESL students to come in, we wanna give them a sense of belonging, help them with absolutely everything we can, outside of classes with student services type things, and then in classes with tutors and with good curriculum and teachers who are well educated. And so, I think that's like a key takeaway. We want ESL students to come in, we wanna give them a sense of belonging, help them with absolutely everything we can, outside of classes with student services type things, and then in classes with tutors and with good curriculum and teachers who are well educated. And so, I think that's like a key takeaway. We want ESL students to come in, we wanna give them a sense of belonging, help them with absolutely everything we can, outside of classes with student services type things, and then in classes with tutors and with good curriculum and teachers who are well educated. And so, I think that's like a key takeaway. We want ESL students to come in, we wanna give them a sense of belonging, help them with absolutely everything we can, outside of classes with student services type things, and then in classes with tutors and with good curriculum and teachers who are well educated. And so, I think that's like a key takeaway. We want ESL students to come in, we wanna give them a sense of belonging, help them with absolutely everything we can, outside of classes with student services type things, and then in classes with tutors and with good curriculum and teachers who are well educated. And so, I think that's like a key takeaway. We want ESL students to come in, we wanna give them a sense of belonging, help them with absolutely everything we can, outside of classes with student services type things, and then in classes with tutors and with good curriculum and teachers who are well educated. And so, I think that's like a key takeaway. We want ESL students to come in, we wanna give them a sense of belonging, help them with absolutely everything we can, outside of classes with student services type things, and then in classes with tutors and with good curriculum and teachers who are well educated. And so, I think that's like a key takeaway. We want ESL students to come in, we wanna give them a sense of belonging, help them with absolutely everything we can, outside of classes with student services type things, and then in classes with tutors and with good curriculum and teachers who are well educated. And so, I think that's like a key takeaway. We want ESL students to come in, we wanna give them a sense of belonging, help them with absolutely everything we can, outside of classes with student services type things, and then in classes with tutors and with good curriculum and teachers who are well educated. And so, I think that's like a key takeaway. We want ESL students to come in, we wanna give them a sense of belonging, help them
outside of classes with student services type things, and then in classes with tutors and with good curriculum and teachers who are well-trained. Um, and then to encourage them as they start to think about what they could do after ESL. So I'm gonna try to go to my notes now a little bit. But, um, in terms of curriculum, we've been, um, most recently working under AB 1705, equitable placement grant to revise our 705, uh, curriculum. And that we implemented during the pandemic, so now we've had time to teach it and look at it, and we have a lot of new teachers. So we're able to kind of usher this new curriculum in with them, and they, they need a lot of support. It's causing us to reflect on the curriculum, so we're revising. We're also making mirrored courses, uh, which are credit and non-credit classes and developing certificates. And all those things are really gonna support our students, um, in a whole, many ways. Um, we offer a English C1000 course. Uh, it's a multilingual section. So our students, a whole cohort, since 2021, each semester a cohort goes from us in ESL into, um, a multilingual section of freshman comp, which has been really successful, and we're seeing students have more confidence and catch the vision for, okay, when I finish ESL, this is, we just say, oh, well, after you finish ESL, this is the next class you take. You know, it's, it's assumed you're gonna keep going. Um, and then in terms of, oh, and we're also getting more Promise students and dual enrollment students as those, as those programs expand. Um, so the next slide. Um, so we also just offer an array of student services in ESL. Uh, super important from when they first come into the office for us to be able to help them and connect with them so that they feel like they can keep coming back and get answers and get the help that they need. And that's through the whole intake process of, of applications, class planning, orientation, assessment, registration, financial aid, all of it. There, it takes a lot of time. I mean, I don't know if you're aware, but student services people, they're, they spend a lot of individual time with students to, to meet a lot of needs. And then ESL students, of course, we've got this language thing going on, so we're constantly having to, to work with them. And, um, also, it's a, it's a totally fresh system, right? They're coming to this country culturally. They're not familiar with the culture, but also the academic system. So they're completely fresh. They need lots of help. Um, and I would just wanted to point out one special program that we have, which is the Peer Advising for Student Success Program. And we have, one thing that we've done, um, for a number of years now is every semester we have career panels for students. And this is just a time to celebrate the educational and professional success of, of people who were ESL students. Um, and we invite former ESL students to talk about their journeys in different areas like culinary arts, uh, computer network engineering, aeronautics, automotive technologies, and, and many more. Last year, Tony Arroyos of Los Arroyos Restaurant came and spoke. He was a, a Santa Barbara City College ESL student. Many of the people that we invite were Santa Barbara City College, um, students. And they, they say, "Oh, Betsy was my teacher. Robin was my teacher. Roberto, long time ago, was my teacher." Um, so that's a really nice connection for our students. The year before that, Dr. Villa Gomez also talked to us about her educational pathway. So this has been a really special time of seeing the accomplishments and really being inspired and a time to celebrate. Um, and the weeks following the career panels, the academic counselors are on site with us in the evenings to meet with students. And so they start doing ed plans with ESL students, especially the advanced ones who are getting ready to matriculate into regular classes. At the lower levels, we take them on campus tours. We're constantly trying to connect them with all different services on campus. So that's what we do in the ESL program, and our goal really is to just empower students and see themselves as, as students and of part of the community at Santa Barbara City College. Thank you.
Hello, everybody. I have my entourage with me, so I feel comfortable. But hello, my name is Alicia Sanchez, and I'm one of the program advisors in the EOPS office. EOPS stands for Extended Opportunities Programs and Services. And what we are here on campus is a support service for students who are low-income, first-generation, underrepresented, system-impacted. The work that we do is pure magic, okay? So, um, this photo right here is a photo from our last graduation that we had in May. I know some of you got to be there. Um, it was a beautiful ceremony. Some of the things that we cover, I could be up here for way more than three minutes, so I'm just gonna do just a brief little, uh, spiel on it. But our students, we like to think of EOPS as a one-stop shop, right? So a lot of our students come from troubled backgrounds, and they can come to our office and feel comfortable. They have a place on campus where they feel safe, right? It's a really important thing to be able to come into a department where people look like you and talk like you and come from similar backgrounds. And that's what we provide in the EOPS department. We have academic counseling. We have advising. We have, uh, we pay for our students' textbooks, book grants, cash grants, meal plans. We really are a one-stop shop for our students. And programs like EOPS are so important for the success of the students that we have on campus. A lot of the things that we offer are not just financial benefits, but also academic benefits, free tutoring, free printing. Like I said, we cover their books, a meal plan while they're on campus so they don't have to worry about paying for their food. A lot of our students don't have the money to be able to provide for themselves, let alone children. We cover childcare for our single parents. Like I said, I could be up here all day talking about it. If we go to the next slide, I kinda wanna take a deep dive into some of the, um, programs that we offer. Like I said, we are EOPS. We have our Care Cal Work students. We also have Next Up, which is for, uh, students who were ever in the foster care system. We have Running Start, which is a six-week summer bridge program that is coordinated by one of our own advisors. That's for high school seniors who are just graduating, coming to SBCC. They get paid to come to college for a six-week program during the summer. We pay them. We pay for their books. They have a great time. We go on field trips. It's a really good time. I did the program back in the day, so I know it's a good time. We have Spark, which is a program for our single parents arriving ready for college. And it really is just a wraparound service that we provide to our students. And if we go to the next slide, um, I wanted to highlight as well our peer mentors that we have working in the office. We have Julian and Phoebe right over here. They came to support. Yes. They're amazing. And what we're doing with our peer mentors is we're trying to install leadership and give them these skills so that when they're done here at Santa Barbara City College, they go off into the world and they make an impact, right? Uh, one of the exciting things that we're doing this semester is, uh, we are taking them to Colorado for a conference. Yeah, it's gonna be cold, but it's gonna be good time.
Yes.
For a leadership conference, and we're really looking forward to it. Um, we know that our student workers are so important because they get to work with the students on a different level. I always like to tell students that. If you wanna get advice, you might wanna talk to them first 'cause they're taking classes. I haven't taken a class here in a long time, so I might not be the one to ask. So, um, really, here in EOPS, we're instilling that into our student workers, and it's been a very beautiful program. I can say that firsthand 'cause I was a peer mentor in EOPS 13 years ago. And the only reason why I'm standing in front of you all today is because of the EOPS program. It shaped me into who I am. I would, I would not be standing here if it wasn't for the support of EOPS. So as a product of the program, I could, I could sit up here for hours and tell you the work that we're doing is amazing, but I know that you all know that. So thank you for listening to me tonight.
Thank you.
Hello. Um, can I go back to the purple slide really quickly? So, oh, and we have an error. So I am, um, back again to talk about our Dream Center program. And before I get started, I just wanted to, um, highlight something that when we were talking about this presentation today in our office that we think is really important to acknowledge. So we wanted to remind everybody that while we are celebrating Hispanic or Latinx Heritage Month, and we're talking about the Dream Center right now, that not all undocumented individuals are of Hispanic or Latinx heritage. Um, and we think that that's really important in this political climate right now to acknowledge that and to also inform you with a little bit of data. So the 2023 data from the Center for Migration Studies estimates that almost 2.4 million undocumented individuals live in California. And nearly 74% of those individuals are of Hispanic or Latinx heritage. So our programs really reflect that in the Dream Center, which is why I'm standing up here today. If you're curious, the next largest group are, um, individuals of Asian descent. That's about 20% of the population. And the remaining 5% is from people from European and African nations. So that's kind of the context of California and actually very similar to what we see in our Dream Program today. That impacts the way that we provide the services that we have in our Dream Center. So one of those things would be particularly around language. We ensure that everything that we provide in the Dream Center is bilingual, English, Spanish. But we also spend a lot of time on translator apps and working with translation services and looking for individuals who can help us to translate the multitude of other languages that we are encountering in our Dream Center. Thank you. So next slide. So as Paloma mentioned, that, uh, the Dream Center was established, or the Dream Center funding came to us in about 2019, and it was a result of, uh, AB 1645, the Dream Resource Liaisons Bill. And dedicated funding came down shortly after from the chancellor's office. And at Santa Barbara City College, we were able to establish our Dream Center, our first Dream Center, um, in 2022. Uh, we also have a Dream Center program that happens in our, uh, non-credit campuses as well that's tailored specifically to the needs and, um, requests of the students who are in the non-credit programs. I wanna highlight here that SBCC has been engaging in this work long before we were sort of required to do so. There was an undocumented, uh, Undocu Support Work Group that many of us were engaged in for years prior to the funding becoming available. And that work group was constantly brainstorming, planning, grant-writing for different opportunities on how to serve our, uh, undocumented population here at Santa Barbara City College. We also had the Community Education Center out at the Wake Campus that was a very revered, um, community resource for many, many years. Um, you, I, I wanna highlight, and my image is probably what caused the error, error. Um, I had a little butterfly that was waving her wings here. And you will notice in some of the other, uh, slides, there's lots of wonderful pictures, and you get to see our students in action. And you will notice that you're not gonna see that here on our Dream pages for obvious reasons, right? We really take great care to protect, protect the confidentiality of the students who are utilizing our services. And, um, actually, yesterday, we were talking to our students about what they really value about our Dream Center programs. And this is especially relevant because our wonderful Dream Center student program advisor has taken a new opportunity to, um, do some really amazing state-level and possibly national-level work. So she's moving on, and so we started to talk to students. What are you worried about? What are you excited about? What do you think? And they said yesterday that although they're gonna be really sad not to see her in the space and not to get the emails from her or get the communication, that they also feel that there's this, um, the word they used was collective security that they feel. And they described that as knowing that there are a lot of different people that they can go to, that they can share their story with, that they can ask for help and support from, and that they know are looking out for their best interest and safety all the time. So I think we're doing our job. Uh, next slide, please. So the Dream Center has, serves as not only a resource to our students, but I think also a resource to the institution. There's several partnerships that we have, um, for instance, with the United Farm Workers, which I'll mention in a moment again, with the Community College League, um, with the Mexican consulate, among other organizations. And what that does for us is be able to bring back best practice, to bring back specific legal advice that maybe our campus lawyers, you know, have the institutional-level knowledge, and maybe we have some information that's coming out of immigration law that we can help to infuse and pass up. So those are some wonderful things that we can do. We also have an opportunity to do a lot of institutional-level, um, professional development and information sharing. So with, of course, the chancellor's office, we have Undocumented Student Week of Action, which is next week. I encourage you all to tune in to the various different webinars that will be provided. But in addition to that, um, the Dream Center puts on a month-long series of, um, both events as well as training and information for people. Um, and then we also have multiple community and campus partnerships that benefit undocumented and mixed-status students that I wanna highlight on the next slide. So I think one of the things that is really, really impactful for our undocumented students is our partnership with the United Farm Workers. And that provides free immigration legal services to our students. Um, we have been able to support 39 individuals in changing their status, um, which I think is really, really incredible. Um, we provide internship opportunities for students who wouldn't be able to go and get a job. And one of our students who recently was able to change her status because of the internship that she had done within our Dream Program was able to, once she had all of the, um, ability to work in the US, was able to go get a job because she had a quote-unquote documented work experience that she may not have had otherwise. So that was really valuable. Um, and that's all partnership with, um, both community agencies, communities, uh, agencies on, or groups on campus and our Career Center. We do academic advising, and we have counseling services, both individual and group services. We take our students to a lot of different conferences, which has been a wonderful opportunity for many of our students because it's their first time to travel. Um, we do resume support, you know, we do everything that you can think of that a student might need, but tailored to a student who might, who is undocumented and maybe is trying to figure out what happens next for them. Um, we do advising to different departments on campus. So for instance, with our academic counselors that we partner with, and reminding departments to talk about the ways that impacts might be different for undocumented students. So for instance, asking people if they've ever thought about, um, being a contractor and what that would look like and what professions they can do that in. So there's a lot of resources that are happening in our Dream Center every day. And, um, we are really excited to see what comes next for us. Thanks.
Thank you for having the opportunity to speak to the board and to President Andrade Donnis. I am here representing the Mesa Program, which stands for Mathematics Engineering, excuse me, and Science Achievement Program. This program got started in 1970 as a state program that actually had quite a bit of intersegmental kind of participation. UC Berkeley was involved in high school teacher. And we first started, uh, supporting students at the high, high school level. The program then expanded into university programs with the help of Professor Ray Landis, who was also studying what was effective strategies to use to encourage students who are studying, uh, engineering in the CSU, UCs, and private institution. Here at Santa Barbara City College, we had a professor named Nick Arnold who's really interested in supporting this kind of programs. Community colleges had expanded from 10 to 20, and he wanted us to be included with the help of the foundation. And that's one of the things I think we do need to give credit to, to them because they gave us the seed money to get us launched. So that in 2008, which was the following year, we had already established a program at some level with the space and at least with the support of the Mesa Director. And by the way, I'm Virginia Straya. I forgot to introduce myself. But, uh, we were able to then, uh, submit a proposal, and then we, we got funded officially in 2008. What, what is our program and who do we serve? We serve underrepresented students since then. We do try to focus in on the local community at our start. Since then, we've expanded, but at the beginning, our funds were small, and we focused in on the, in the, on the Santa Barbara County area. And now we can go a little bit further and serve students out of the area. And it's first generations, it's, uh, students and students on financial aid. That's the eligibility criteria for Mesa. Our goal is engagement, retention, and transfer. I try to keep it simple. There's eight, there's actually eight objectives, but they all sort of address these three issues. I, we were, when we were looking for presenting, we were... I, when we were looking for presenting, we were thinking, what photo would be a good thing to include? And actually, let me go back to the other slide. I love this picture because it actually, in one photograph, it almost addresses all the services that we provide. In the front row, you'll see that there are, I think, six people, which five of them are all SBCC students, now all engineers at Raytheon. And they came to present and encourage our students to continue to study. In the back is our Counselor Maria Morales, who through the help of the Student Services and the Academic Counseling, I think that she's a critical component of our program in which she helps guide the students through their educational plan and ultimately to the transfer. Usually, the last year, she spends a lot of time with them when they're working through their applications. Further back in, I think it's the fourth row, the guy with the lime shirt, that's Professor Gabe Patel. Mesa has a faculty sponsor. And we've always, sometimes we've had two, sometimes we've had three. Right now, it's Stephanie Mendez, Gabe Patel, and we're going to be adding Hector Gamera. All of them two that I think have compelling stories, and I think our students could see really good role modeling. We do report to the academic side of the house and to academic affairs, but I still feel that we work well with Student Services. They invite me to their student leadership meetings, so that is a pleasure. And of course, sprinkle all over are the students themselves. So that's the one that ends up in our website. And I hate to change it because years are passing, and everybody's looking a little older. But I like that we capture the role of industry, the role of the academic services that we have here with counseling and with our instructional side of the house. And that's why I wanted to just talk about that particular program. What do we serve? Now, next slide. So we offer opportunities to work on projects. Some of the people that you saw in the previous photo actually worked on a project with our student Raytheon engineers to do a little kiosk so that every time the students came in, they would sign in, and they decided that they were going to do their own sign-in kiosk using our student ID with the K number. And that was a great opportunity for students that participated for about, I would say, a semester and a half. And then we have academic support, which I covered in terms of our counselor. But we also have support in the space that's very organic. Since all the students are studying STEM, there is a lot of support with each other to make sure that they're successful in their study groups that formulate. We have industry involvement, which you can see in the previous slide. And in this slide, we had a field trip to Talladega. And again, continuing to emphasize the goal at the end, which is, you know, when they transfer, they'll hopefully get their bachelor's degree and go work in industry. Although we do support all the other sciences, we have a lot of students that are pre-med and things like that. And then we've had opportunities to serve students for encouraging and serving a bridge to experience undergraduate research with UCSB, Santa Cruz, UC Santa Cruz, with the Smithsonian. We've had a lot of really cool opportunities against strengthening the students' resolve that they are in the right place. And I think that actually covers it all. The one thing that I wanted to just say about the top photo is that they do form a strong community with each other. So I never have a hard time going to walk the line to see if I can find photos of my students, and they usually are bunched up, so I think we've succeeded. One thing not mentioned in the slide that also is really critical is that Santa Barbara gave us a good, dedicated space so for all the students to also congregate and do things that are, we have speakers there, they study there. It's a really nice opportunity for them to meet and develop community. So thank you.
Hi, and good evening, Board of Trustees, President Abud, President Superintendent, Dr. Andrew Jonas, and colleagues. My name is Dr. Jenny Erica Barco, and I am the Program Coordinator for the TAP Program. And I'm here to share an update on the Transfer Achievement Program, known to many as TAP, which is within our University Transfer Center. TAP is designed for students with limited university knowledge and exposure, and often first generation, first in their families navigating higher education. Among them are Latinx students. We guide them step by step from their first orientation, from choosing a major and exploring and selecting universities, to then prepare for their applications, and finally, making that transition to the university. I also want to take a moment to acknowledge the founder of TAP, Armando Segura, who served as SBCC's Transfer Center Director and passed away in May of 2023. A bench now sits in Memorial Plaza in his honor, reminding us daily of his vision and commitment to the transfer students. In short, the Transfer Achievement Program is providing structure, support, and a sense of belonging to our students as they move through the often overwhelming transfer process. Next slide, please. This fall has been a strong semester for student engagement. We held our transfer orientations welcoming students and helping them set their transfer goals early. A large part of our work this season is individualized. We are meeting with our students to assist and review their college applications, providing feedback on their UC personal insight questions, discussing university selection, and guiding them through every single step. It's personalized, it's hands-on support that gives students the confidence to press submit knowing their best work is represented. We expanded our campus tours from the Bay Area with UC Berkeley, Stanford, and San Jose State to the San Diego area, which included San Diego State University, UC San Diego, and the University of San Diego. These trips are truly transformative. In fact, we now see the results years later. Two of our TAP alumni who once joined us on these trips are thriving at UC Berkeley and will be hosting our students this October. That full-circle impact is what TAP is all about. And looking forward, our northern trip includes Cal Poly Slow, UC Davis, and UC Berkeley. Closer to home, we brought the community together with our kickoff at Lead Better Beach, and we continue to support students directly through scholarships and book grants. Next slide, please. One of TAP's most powerful traditions is our annual Sash and Graduation Ceremony. The trustees, our superintendent president, administrators, faculty, and families all come together in a deeply moving celebration. Each student is ushered onstage by a parent or a loved one, and in that symbolic moment, receive their sash. It's intimate, emotional, and a true community celebration of the transfer journey. And just as important, each year, we honor a faculty or staff member nominated by students as the Armando Seguro Award recipient, recognizing those who go above and beyond to support transfer success. Alongside these traditions, we are seeing more students committing to their transfer as their educational goal, strong applications, and stronger collaborations with SBCC programs. Ultimately, students are reporting greater confidence and clarity in navigating the transfer process, demonstrating a clear reflection of TAP's impact with more students successfully being admitted to their preferred university. And I would also like to put in a plug to invite all of you to the University Transfer College Fair happening on Wednesday, October 29th, from 11:00 to 2:00. Hope to see you there.
Hello, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Good evening. My name is Dr. Melissa Menendez, and I'm here to talk about and share about the RIASIS First Year and Beyond Program. Next slide. Next slide. Oh, there we go. So what RIASIS offers? We offer wraparound services for retention and persistence. We have a Student Affairs Support Team, which consists of two advisors, two academic counselors, 50 instructional faculty, 12 non-instructional faculty, six colegas or peer mentors, and then three Placita staff. Our Academic Affairs Team is basically trained through the RIASIS Faculty Institute, which supports faculty to incorporate trauma-informed pedagogical practices to work with our students. We also offer Learning Colectiva and RIASIS-supported courses. So when we look at our Fall 2025 course schedule, we had 79 sections identified, and they were representing 22 different disciplines. So RIASIS scholars, our current numbers, we have over 300 who have been fully onboarded into the program. And at least two-thirds, if not more, do not belong to any other program at SBCC when they come to us. So RIASIS is providing wraparound services to students who would not otherwise be served by the institution in this particular way. So this reality meets the intention of the Title V Hispanic Serving Institution Grant that funds the program. Next slide. So servingness and empowering our comunidad. So our wraparound services that RIASIS offers is not just the student support and academic affairs type of wraparound services, but it also includes cultural celebration and affirmation. So for Fall Semester, we hosted, in conjunction with the AMoja community, HSI and HBCU Week Events. And then now, during the Hispanic-Latinx Heritage Month, we have hosted several events, an inaugural flag raising, the servingness discussion circle. The RIASIS Faculty Institute had its Fall Retreat. The Art of Being with Mica Hernandez. First Thursdays, we collaborated with the Office of Communications. We held The Art of Being with Ana Teresa Fernandez. We held a meet the illustrator and writer, Zeke Penya. We collaborated with Dream and BNC around a food justice panel. Noche de Football is next week on October 14th. And then I know it's outside of the realm, but we are collaborating with campus partners around a Dia de los Muertos community altar. Next slide. So more opportunities and ways we are serving our scholars for just the Fall of 2025. Again, our wraparound services that we offer also include introducing opportunities beyond SBCC and strengthening a sense of community and belonging, both at SBCC and beyond. And you can see some of those events that will be taking place in the remainder of the semester. So RIASIS has established the necessary foundation for a robust first-year experience and student empowerment program that is meant to intentionally serve the needs of the largest student population we enroll at SBCC. We have established a program that aligns student affairs, right? The advisors, academic counselors, with academic affairs, curriculum, pedagogy, Learning Colectiva courses, RIASIS-supported courses, and 50 instructional faculty under a shared community of practice so that our students, our scholars, have a team of mentors who strive to close equity gaps for the students we serve. All of the departments and programs presenting here this evening not only serve our Hispanic and Latinx students, but other student populations as well. But when we're isolating our Hispanic/Latinx students that each of these programs serve, it is important to highlight that we are all serving predominantly different groups of students within this very diverse demographic. Consequently, we are each serving a diverse need for this very diverse demographic. This is how all of these programs are unique. We therefore hope our executive leadership understands what we are truly cultivating with this new program, RIASIS, and they will continue to nurture what we have planted. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Buenas tardes. My name is Luis Hernandez, and I teach Spanish. I'm here on behalf of our Department, the School of Moral Languages. Next slide, please. In terms of student success, we have strong enrollment and transfer pathways through the Spanish AA and the AA Transfer Program. For equity and access, we offer Spanish for heritage speakers that supports bilingual and bicultural students. In terms of community engagement, we participate in cultural programming and partnerships. We have film series, El Dia de los Muertos celebration, guest speakers. Actually, next week on October 15th, we have a journalist from Los Angeles Times, Zori Jimenez, that's going to be here next week, so hopefully you can make it. I am offering extra credit. We also have the Spanish Club, where students meet and improve their Spanish skills. Next slide, please. And looking into the future, we're expanding certificates in Spanish and other languages to meet workforce demand. We're also increasing online and hybrid courses, course offerings for working students. And we continue our commitment to advance for equity and representation in higher education. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you for the presentation. We may have questions from the board. Do we have any questions from board members? Trustee Morris.
Comment? Since real history is being challenged nowadays, it's worth remembering that people were making their lives here in North America speaking Spanish 40 years at least before anyone was up here speaking English.
Was that the end of your comment?
That's my comment.
Trustee Bonametti.
I just wanted to comment as well. Thank you for all the lovely presentations. It's really nice to get to know what our faculty is doing to support students and just seeing and hearing everything from you guys has just been absolutely amazing in the short time I've been here. So thank you.
Trustee Sutter.
Yes, I just want to be sure I heard this correctly. Dr. Menendez, she said that the RIASIS program supports, she inferred that there's like not a duplication of services. So we have the RIASIS program that serves some students who aren't being served by all these other programs. Is that correct? Did I mean that correctly?
I'm going to have Vice President Paloma Arnold respond to that. Yes, one of the benefits, a lot of the other programs that we highlighted today do have some specific eligibility requirements. The RIASIS program, one of the nice things about it is that the eligibility is much broader. So they are able to serve a lot of the students that are not able to be served in some of the other programs. There are some students who are in multiple programs, but that is one of the benefits of the RIASIS.
Great. Thank you for the clarification.
Anyone else? I'll just add that some of these programs discuss, you know, student size populations like RIASIS did. So it'd be good for us to hear about that and the success of the students in these programs. Like, what if, are you in this program, you graduate 80% in three years versus if you're not, it's 70%? So it'd be good to know if these programs, what they do to help students be successful. Like, is it a 20% bump, 5% bump? I think that's important for us to know. Right. Oh, Trustee Bonametti.
I know we have that data from AMoja, just from our board retreat. Do we have any data on RIASIS and its support?
We do have that data. Where, the data on RIASIS? Yeah, I think it, well, no, she, Dr. Maginal is not going to be able to answer that specifically right now, but I think the short answer is we do have that data, and we can provide that data.
Yeah, no, we didn't think it'd be today.
No, no. Should have articulated that a little better.
Sorry to put you on the spot.
No, no, that's okay.
Okay, thank you all. So we'll move on to the next part of the agenda, which is communications, and start with associated students.
Good afternoon, Superintendent President Andrew Jonas, Board President Abud.
Good afternoon, Superintendent President Andrew Jonas, Board President Abud, and the esteemed members of the board. This month, our Associated Student Government has focused on training and onboarding our new team. We have a statewide training coming up with the Student Senate for California Community Colleges, and we're excited to continue building our leadership skills and knowledge. I would like to recognize my team's enthusiasm, some of which are here today, and all of them are actively representing the student voice. One of our top priorities this year is increasing student representation in shared governance. I'm proud to report that we now have students serving on ninety-five percent of the college-wide committees we've been invited into, and we're continuing to work towards full coverage. We're also hosting several events, some of which were hosted this past month, including a Constitution Day celebration and a wonderful club fair. Our club fair had more than thirty student organizations come out to recruit and connect with students. Looking ahead, we're collaborating with the Honors Program and many other campus groups to bring back a large Halloween event similar to the one we held last year. Lastly, something our team is especially excited about is launching a regular town hall meeting. This will allow us to hear from students directly and on a larger scale, ensuring that their voices continue to guide our work. Thank you for your continued support.
Thank you. Questions? Okay, Academic Senate report.
Good evening, Board President Jonathan Abud, members of the board, Superintendent President Andrew Jonas. I have three updates to share with the board this evening. If I may have the next slide, please. The work continues with the faculty's efforts to overhaul our teaching practices and mitigate some of the challenges that come with AI. Our Academic Policies Committee has turned its attention towards updating AP 5550, Academic Integrity, to update our policies to outline both students' and faculty's obligations when it comes to the use of generative AI. Conversation that I had with Dr. Andrew Jonas just yesterday and kind of dropped on us like an anvil, complicating the picture on potential AI-driven learning and also potential learning loss. But not entirely unexpected is the notion that AI could be used for tutoring purposes and also for special accommodations for students with learning disabilities. These are just two sample articles that speak to that. While I can see some advantages in using AI for tutoring purposes to allow for greater access to tutoring on a twenty-four-seven basis for students, there are concerns about professors' intellectual property being fed to an AI. On top of AIs really being kind of a black box, especially when it comes to tutoring, one does not know how students engage with it absent line of sight and with reports of students being led astray by AIs academically and also personally. Similar concerns revolve around note-taking services for students with DSPS accommodations. Once again, faculty's own intellectual property being fed into AIs for note-taking purposes, but also set against a necessity that comes with using note-taking services if they are found to be beneficial for students with learning disabilities. All of this merits an ever-growing discussion on AI. If I may have the next slide, please. But a more optimistic note, I wanted to offer my thanks to the Director of the Scheinfield Center for Entrepreneurship and Innovations, Julie Sampson and the Career Center's Holly Eubank for visiting with the Academic Senate to inform us that they are hosting their three-part AI Unlocked series focused on connecting students with industry leaders in the community to educate students about careers and workplaces that are increasingly incorporating AI with heightened demands for AI literacy. Both Julie and Holly send their regards and their invitation to the board to consider attending. I believe that the first event is actually tomorrow with two other events as well. If I may have the next slide, please. Midsummer, the community colleges in our state received a memo outlining regulatory provisions that for some time we have been inching towards regarding burden-free access to instructional materials. As outlined in the memo, it seems like a heavy lift. The usual candidates have the faculty move towards free online educational resources, or OER, expand zero textbook cost pathways, expand lending services, and within copyright laws, make digital copies of the opening chapters of books available to be day-one ready. Easy lift, no problem. For which our OER liaison to the state level, Corey Bott, and I read this and we raise our hand saying, where's the labor for all of this going to come? And to be able to just copy all of those chapters is a lot of work. It's not something that we can put on our library staff to be able to do. We need more guidance from the state too about the memo's provisions that we encourage burden-free access reflected on our policies. The campus already does quite a bit to encourage more access to instructional materials with zero textbook cost courses advertised on our schedule of classes, to library lending services through our digital collection, to course modification processes that require online faculty to articulate how they are making their textbooks more accessible to students. But how visible this is reflected in our policies is something we are wrestling with, along with trying to reconcile policy with memos occasionally referencing the word encourage. They want policy and also policy that says encourage this move and also observe academic freedom. So you can imagine what confusion that we are have with trying to address this memo. It's one of the reasons why we are sending our chapter delegate Kathy O'Connor and a team of Senate appointees to the next ASC Fall Plenary to get some clarification on this. If I may have the next slide, please. Scheduling, scheduling, scheduling. This has been a nonstop conversation since before the start of the semester. One bright spot that I think is worth mentioning is that institutional research visited with the Senate this week to offer a very involved, very lively conversation about the upcoming Student Scheduling Needs Survey, pictured here in draft mode. It's an important conversation to be had that we gather student input about what their scheduling needs are. In fact, I'm very glad to say that we have a student rep from ASG, Leo Smith, who also was in, who also was part of that conversation as well. It's important to get a better understanding about some of the life circumstances that students prioritize that might explain why they may need face-to-face courses at that moment when they are taking the survey event, maybe to find out later on what life circumstances have actually changed that suggest, I wanted a face-to-face class, but I ended up in an online class. And it may not necessarily be because of the availability or lack thereof of face-to-face courses or an online course. Students' lives change and very quickly sometimes. We want to be able to understand students' experiences. They are not just aiming for, for face-to-face courses, not just to be able to satisfy their learning needs, but because they want an experience on campus. It's online campus life. It's the experience of camaraderie that students want when they come to our campus and the reasons for why they sometimes enroll in online classes. I come from the streets of Oxnard and I know some of our students who come from Oxnard to SBCC. They're not just coming here for their classes, they're coming here for experiences of college life. They see our shoreline and students from brown neighborhoods will look at our campus and they will say, I arrived. And in the same way that I did when I first stepped foot on this campus. And those are experiences that we do need to hear about. It's one of the reasons why I'm glad that we are seeking student input. I would like to express my gratitude to IRS Keller Maganot and Melanie Rogers for listening to the faculty's input on this important survey. In parallel, we also have members of our Teaching and Learning Committee reaching out to students in special programs to help add narrative in a way that I hope will complement the data points to be collected for this student needs survey. It's one piece to the larger picture on what a campus dialogue about scheduling requires if we are to be successful for our students. Earlier this semester, faculty across several divisions experienced challenges with a push to increase their face-to-face offerings with a new fifty percent quota. While I have often said that we need to offer diversity in our scheduling, incorporating all our modalities of learning, and while campus life needs a shot in the arm to its campus presence, a critical mass of students and faculty on campus, this is something that needs to be leaned into with surgical precision and a long-term plan. Face-to-face classes where we know that students need them most, as well as a safe harbor to guarantee that face-to-face classes that we are exploring outside of peak time have more flexibility to avoid cancellation until the student-going population sees stability in our class offerings. This takes time for a cultural shift. We are trying to still make that traverse post-pandemic. The impact of this has complications for labor as well as the FA can attest to. This has to be a collaborative effort, one that recognizes faculty expertise on the matter of scheduling that's, and in a way that serves students, and one that I hope we can discuss in more depth during next week's Consultation Council and ongoing consultation at the Senate. Thank you for giving me a moment this evening to offer the Senate's updates.
Thank you. Any questions? And next up is, oops, Classified Staff Report.
Good evening, President Abud, President Andrew Jonas, board members. I really enjoyed the presentations. You know, I really congratulate all of the staff and the faculty and the students that put it all together. You know, it's very nice to kind of start things off with that kind of thing that shows the programs, the college offers that some people don't, aren't aware of that much. So I really congratulate the people that did that. And I also want to congratulate the Student Senate because at CPC this last time, we actually had, I think, at least four students. And we haven't had students since come to CPC for a long time, at least a few years. And it was good that they came because we talked about the addressing the college climate. This is an issue that people have come to you to talk about for a long time. And I feel that we're beginning to address it, first with students, but then in the spring with staff, and to see where we are and then to have groups to meet and talk about things. So I think we're bringing stuff out that has kind of been, I'm not necessarily ignored, but just kind of, it's been there, but nobody's really wanted to address it. And I think it's great that, that we're finally addressing that. So I wanted to thank the administration and the faculty and especially the students for coming to the meetings. That's a great thing. So I'm happy that they're able to do that and that they're spending their time. I don't have anything to report really on negotiations because we haven't had one since I last, but we have made some progress. We're addressing the short-term work issue, which is long-term and we're slowly starting to address it. We've been meeting with some of the managers, some of the VPs to address the issues, so I'm happy about that. And the last thing is I want to put a plug in for the, it's called Trunk or Treat. On October twenty-third, CSEA and the staff are going to actually participate this year. They're going to, one of our members has a car that we're going to help to, you know, dress up. And I think that's a great thing Athletics and PE are doing for everybody. So I just wanted to make it, it's the twenty-third from five to seven as far as if you have children you want to bring. So that's pretty much my, have any questions? Thanks.
Thank you. Next is Faculty Association.
Good afternoon, honorable members of the Board of Trustees, President Abud, Dr. Andrew Jonas. I have exciting news for you today. My report is very short. Next slide, please. The FA does many things to keep our members informed and I listed the first, as first, an example of how we do that. We share with our members what's happening on campus and what the union is doing. There are emails, meetings, consultations, you name it, but today I want to highlight an actual fun one, and that are our FA Coffee Hours. We meet at the campus store, grab coffee and goodies from the Starbucks counter, and enjoy small group conversations at the coffee tables in the store. Some of them have Ocean View. Trustee Morris already joined us once. If one of you wants to take the opportunity and stop by and connect with faculty, please feel invited. The next one is scheduled for October twenty-third. Another item of importance that is coming up this month is our statewide conference of the Unaffiliated Faculty Unions for California Community Colleges. There are thirteen college districts with independent unions and that includes us, yeah, but also very big ones like Santa Monica, Futilianza, or Contra Costa. We call ourselves TripleCI, which is short for California Community College Independence. We meet once in spring and once in fall. This time, the FA is sending five board members to this conference. That is actually the largest group we have ever sent. It will be an interesting three-day event. Among other topics, we will discuss AI, labor law, and generally exchange the challenges and successes that our member districts experience at our local campuses. Personally, I cannot wait bragging a bit about our successful implementation of the part-time faculty health insurance at our campus. And finally, I want to officially report to you that the FA has formally requested negotiations about a new and additional topic that has emerged, and that is the new fifty percent scheduling approach for fully face-to-face classes. You heard the details about these topics already from the Academic Senate President tonight. This fifty percent approach is something new that was introduced to several of our divisions in the middle of the recent scheduling process for spring 2026. And it came to all of us as a surprise. While the FA had for more than two years repeatedly suggested to the district at various occasions that we really need to talk about the general topic of face-to-face presence, we had not gotten much traction. So the sudden occurrence and the presentation of a fixed percentage came to us unexpectedly. Hence, we informed the administration that prior to implementing this, there needs to be, for one, consultation with the Academic Senate, and it also needs negotiations with the faculty union about the impacts of such a new fifty percent approach. We haven't had any of those consultations or negotiations yet, so the FA did request such impact negotiations to happen right away. Next slide, please. And as promised, that is all what I have for you today, unless there are any questions.
Trustee Blackmire.
Juan, would it be possible to request getting these, what is it, one, two, three, four reports as part of the, the board packet so we can have the slides and just the information? So we're able to form, form questions prior to, because there's always a lot of information and I have a, I'm not able to think of questions immediately on the spot as we're getting it for the first time. So having it beforehand and being able to process it would be greatly appreciated.
I can try to do my very best, but I'm kind of a last-minute person, I must admit, guilty as charged. I will try.
Thank you. And then my next question is about the fifty percent face-to-face. It was my understanding that that wasn't mandated or required and it has since been retracted. It's sort of a, I don't know, someone misspoke or spoke out of turn. And so I hear that there's concern about this, but I would like some clarity on where that came from and if it's an actual demand on the faculty or if it's something that got lost in translation.
I think it's fair to say it's something that got lost in translation. So there was scheduling guidelines that were, in some cases, misinterpreted to mean fifty percent and that was communicated, but that's since been retracted. So now the issue is less about a fifty percent mandate that was never there than it is about a discussion or a difference of opinion that we need to talk about, about what impacts mean and what consultation means. Because there's not agreement about how a schedule of classes gets determined and who has the final authority. So I think that that's what the FA President is referring to and the Academic Senate President.
Thank you.
And I want to offer, if you want to have background documentation, the FA is very happy to provide, right?
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Superintendent President Report.
Great. Well, with the, with the start of Hispanic Latina Heritage Month on September fifteenth, we raised the Latina Heritage Flag that has flown since then and will until the month's celebrations end on October fifteenth. On September eighteenth, I was in Sacramento at the CEO Board Meeting where we discussed the state of higher education, pending higher education bills sitting on the governor's desk.
pending higher education bills sitting on the governor's desk and the statewide challenges of banner nine. So all of the, all of you out there who are like gnashing your teeth about banner nine, you are not alone. And there's actually some talk of lawsuit. So just to let you know, it's not about us, but we're not alone in being frustrated as well as concern about the end of Title V Hispanic serving institution grants. So September 22nd, we had a refresher for the campus community on the new PEN Athletics building that's currently being deconstructed. And if you hadn't had a chance, drive by it because the chomping is chomping and the building is coming down. The information session reminded our campus of the design, the amenities and how the new building will transform our cliff campus. And I want to thank LPA Architects, Kitchell, Dean Michael Medel and the PE Athletics program for hosting that. It's really interesting. On Tuesday, September 23rd, we had a really great, great moment in the Center for Equity and Social Justice with the Pride Center grand opening. That was a transition from a virtual space to a physical space, which is amazing. And if you haven't visited there, I really highly encourage you to go. It has, it's beautiful. And I want to thank Selena Martinez and Dr. Roxanne Byrne for their work on making a physical space a reality. The Santa Barbara City College Foundation held its annual fall reception on Wednesday, September 24th at the Garvin Theater patio. The event honored SBCC alumni Sonia Aguila, carpentaria dual immersion teacher who received the 2023 National Bilingual Teacher of the Year Award. The event also highlighted the strength of the SBCC Foundation and SBCC together. The band played, jazz band played a beautiful array of music. We also had food provided by our catering. It was really great. And I want to thank trustees David Morris, Jonathan Abud, Vice President Kyle Richards for being in attendance. After that, I worked the Galita Lemon Festival on September 28th, where I got to be a cashier in the beer booth, which is a really fun place to be a cashier. People are very happy and they come back a lot. And, and I did that as a proud member of the South Coast Chamber of Commerce that sponsors the event each year. On a more serious note, our college planning council had our annual retreat on Tuesday, September 30th. We covered a myriad of topics, but one topic in particular was a discussion on our campus culture, which is often brought up in public comment of board meetings. And we asked CPC members three questions. How do you define civility? And we discussed maybe using a more inclusive term at SBCC. What type of environment do you want to see at SBCC? And what can you do to model that environment? As I said in our October 1st Executive Committee newsletter, the responses were honest, heartwarming and absolutely attainable, ranging from holding ourselves accountable, treating each other with respect, developing a new positive social contract, and above all things, humanizing each other while also assuming positive intent. And that conversation is just beginning. As a follow-up to the retreat conversation at our regular CPC meeting this past Tuesday, we discussed the campus climate student and employee surveys that Liz referenced and that will be conducted this year with the help of a very well-respected group, the RP Group, who helped the college develop our most recent education vision plan. There was a great deal of discussion around the issues with the last campus climate survey that was conducted on, in 2019. And we want to definitely avoid the problems that were identified with that one. So I want to, everybody stay tuned for more information as the format of the spring survey and timeline gets finalized. On Thursday, October 2nd, we had our first monthly first Thursday event with a Hispanic heritage theme in front of the Metamorphosis of Reality mural at the campus center. I really enjoy seeing folks come out for coffee, a snack and conversation each month. The next day on Friday, October 3rd, I presented to the Partners in Education board an update on what we're doing here at Santa Barbara City College. And last night, I attended the theater production of Arms and the Man, which was excellent. And I look forward to attending the football game against Moore Park College. Let's get it to those Raiders on Saturday night. So go Vax. And finally, because I think it's important to note this as many times as possible, I would like to reiterate that no immigration customs and enforcement operations have come to Santa Barbara City College's campuses to date. We sent out a notice to campuses, to all of our campus that a new California law requires colleges to inform students and personnel if they do come to campus. And we will make sure to make, to let everyone know. And I just want to reiterate how seriously we take it and we are here to make sure our environment is safe for everyone, our students, our faculty, our staff and administration. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, next up is section eight, bond items. We have two items on here for bond. Any motion to approve or questions?
I'll motion to approve.
Thank you. For both, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any other discussion on the motion? All right, if you're voting yes, please vote yes. Yes. If you're voting no, abstaining. And I'll vote yes. All right, next up is the action items. So first is Resolution 22, delegation of authority. Do we have a motion to approve Resolution 22?
I'll move.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Trustee Corning Jaren Morris. Any discussion? All right, if you're voting yes, vote yes.
Yes.
If you're voting no, abstaining. Right, next is Resolution 23, authorized representatives for the continued funding application, California Department of Education, California State Preschool Program, 2627. Any questions?
So moved.
We have a second?
I'll second that.
You started and Richards. Any other discussion? All right, if you're voting yes, please vote yes.
Yes.
Yes. If you're voting no, abstaining. Right, next is classifications. Any questions or motion to approve classifications?
I'll move approval.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any other discussion? If you're voting yes, please vote yes.
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 If you're voting no, abstaining. Restructuring of the scheduling department. Can we have a motion or questions?
I'll motion.
Do we have a second? Okay, trustee Bonamede and Blackmerits, any other discussion? All right, if you're voting yes, please vote yes.
Yes.
And last, oh, not, not last, next is a budget transfer between major objects. It's a net zero change. I don't see we have an attachment here.
No, I do.
Does this mean to have an attachment or does it not need?
There is an attachment.
Attachment.
A 9.5? I'm not getting it.
9.5, yeah.
Oh, I didn't get it either.
You know, I think it's because it wound up in the administrative file rather than.
Oh.
Well, I have it.
Are you down far enough?
Yeah. Also, I mean, I trust it if others have it.
On the screen, I mean.
No, yeah, I am.
Okay.
Not coming up for me. All right, well, do we have a motion to approve? It's a net zero change, so I think we're okay. All right, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. And if you're voting yes, please vote yes.
Yes.
If you're voting no, abstaining. All right, next is our superintendent president's employment agreement. And so this is the second amendment to the agreement and I will give a summary of what's in here, which is we are extending the term of the agreement to July 2029. So it's a four-year agreement now. We are changing the salary and benefits section. One is section 7.4, which was approved last year, like, you know, exactly a year ago, October 10th. It had an, an error in it and how what we meant to do and what it ended up saying. So we are making that correction now. And lastly, we are adding a step system for the superintendent president position that begins with the current salary of $336,000 and goes up 2%, then 2.5 and then another 2.5. So four total steps. And the next step for 2526 would be $342,450. And the final step is $359,786. So those are the, those are the changes. And we did get a note from one of our board members on the calculation of the 2% and it's supposed to be, I think, it's just off by $200. So we can make the correction there to be $342,720.
Well, I would like to move that we approve that.
Okay, so motion to approve the contract with the amendment.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any discussion on the contract? Trustee Blackmerits.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. Thank you for wanting to still be here and thank you for your leadership.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that. And I appreciate the vote of confidence and the fact that you, you had the opportunity to do a one-year extension because that's part of the rolling, the evergreen contract I have in that you chose instead to add two years as a vote of confidence. And I greatly appreciate it. So thank you.
A hundred percent agreed. I mean, I think the, we have never had a four-year contract as far as I know with our past superintendents. And so I think this is just a, a vote of confidence and a hope that we continue with stability at this college, which we didn't have until you got here. A lot of problems have been fixed just because we've had an experienced leader who's been stably here for two, two years and some now. So I think we've been doing great as a team and I'm looking forward to seeing the future.
Me too.
Any other questions, comments, concerns? All right, well, let's do a roll call vote, please, on this one.
Yes.
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 It's approved. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I feel like Sally Field. You like me.
It's referenced.
Yeah.
So can I stamp that?
Yeah.
All right, next up is governing boards, a report from board members. I know a lot of you are going to a conference pre-seed. So we'll start with trustee Sutter.
Okay, well, I went to the Mesa Association meeting and there were two main topics of conversation. One, the city council is working on a short-term rental draft ordinance, which will affect the Mesa because we are here on the Mesa, we're all in the coastal zone. So they're working on a draft ordinance. They're hoping to have the draft ordinance ready by fall of 2026. And then it'll do whatever ordinances do, I think, go through some kind of process. So they're trying to make all the, limit the amount of short-term rentals we can have and make them all be legal. And the other thing that's happening, which I didn't even know about, there is going to be a Vic Trace Reservoir Replacement Project. Now, the Vic Trace Reservoir sits kind of above the Holy Cross Church there on Cliff Drive. It's like up, up that hill. And it serves 70% of the city's population with water. And the infrastructure is very old. It's not earthquake safe. And so they are working on a plan to renovate the whole thing. It's going to be just better. And they're, they're, the years that they're going to be working on this project are 2028 through 2031. And they're hoping to coordinate with what's happening on Cliff Drive so that those of us who live on the Mesa can still get around.
Thank you. Trustee Bonamede.
Yes, so Sam and I will actually be leaving in about five minutes to attend ASGA's national conference. It's their 21st years. It's the American Student Government Association's conference in DC. So that's really exciting. We're taking a red eye. So please have us in your thoughts. It's gonna be a long trip, but.
Be good.
Yeah. So thank you.
Here in Washington.
Oh, yeah.
Very, yeah, safe travels. Trustee Richards.
Oh, yeah, first report that I, as mentioned by Dr. Andrew Jonas, I was at the Santa Barbara City College Foundation Fall Reception. It was great to be there and it was really inspiring to hear the student or speaker that was a former student in the program. So that was, and she had her children there and that was really, really great too as well. Also, last week I spent two days down in Anaheim for the California Community College Climate Summit. And it was a, a group of about, I don't know, a gathering of, I think, 200 or 300 people from all over California, mostly California community colleges. There were some other groups represented from out of state as well. And it was really inspiring and there's a lot of great work being done. It, it was great to see the state support this program in particular. There was obviously a huge commitment by the state of California to, you know, produce this event. And this was the second year, I guess, that, that this has been going on. Hopefully it will continue. In particular, I went to a couple sessions on microgrids and I did learn that, that SBCC will not be the first community college in the state to have a microgrid. There are others. But I think we're a little ahead of the curve in terms of our discussion about how to turn our microgrid into a resilience, a community resilience hub. And so there wasn't really any discussions about that. And so I think that we could really be a leader in that area. As a follow-up to that, I, I heard some disturbing news that there were some Department of Energy grants last week that were canceled. And I'm still waiting to hear back if that affects the grant that we got for our microgrid. So hopefully there'll be good news, but I'm a little worried about that. So we'll see. We might have to have further discussions about that topic.
And I think we've been in, I think we've reached out to our microgrids folks to find out exactly what's happening. Because it's, you know, scale microgrid is the one, is the entity that will be very impacted if all that money goes away.
Yeah. Yeah. And, and the article I read in the LA Times specifically referenced resilience and, and grid hardening grants. And I'm like, I think that's what we have here. So we'll, we'll see. I think we'll have more information soon. And then along with a few of my colleagues, I'll be going next week to the Association of College, Community College Trustees, a national conference in New Orleans this year. I'm excited about that.
Not next week. Don't make me.
Oh, two weeks. Sorry, two weeks. I'm sorry. It's October 21st to the 25th, which unfortunately we won't be here for the Faculty Association Coffee Hours. So won't miss that. Thank you.
Beignets and cafe au lait.
Anyone else? Trustee Morris, did you have your hand up earlier? No?
I was just going to say that I'm attending the AI conference here tomorrow. Trying to keep up on that. And a lot of work. Keep your eye on that one.
Yeah. On that note, I did join the Chancellor's Office AI Council recently as the representative from the trustees board, the statewide trustees board. So I will start joining those meetings, I think, next week and I'll report back on what they're talking about there. I also attended our, you know, statewide trustees board meeting the same day as our superintendent, just in different parts of the day. And they talked a lot about us with the 2627 budget and the asks that we're going to, the community college system will have there. And the fact that it's just not looking good. It's the state budget situation continues to be in a structural deficit. So we're asking for the basics, at least to get cola and growth, but that's the best we could, you know, there's other asks, but the league thinks that the best we should ask for is making sure we get the basics instead of just all the above and beyond stuff. But other thing is I was invited, I'm not sure if others got the invitation, but I was invited by the second district supervisor's office for a summit on October 30th about reimagining government land. And so I will be attending that because a few months ago, many months ago, we did have a visit with the supervisor's office and the county community services department on looking at the Wake campus for potential housing. But that's not something we committed to. It's just a, a walk around we, we attended at their interest. So I will go to the summit if anyone else is interested. I think it might be open to others, but I'll be there on the 30th. And I think that's the end of my report. Right. Next up is uh we have a fair number of policies and procedures to go through. So we'll start with ten point two, uh BP twenty four ten, our general board policies procedure. This one is, has a lot of changes, but is a first reading. Bye trustee Bonametti.
Happy travels.
So there, this is our, essentially our policy on how policies are changed and been made. And so it's an important policy. So wondering if there's any discussion or questions on this one.
I just want to say one thing. Um we worked very hard on this. We really uh spent a lot of time. Keller was really helpful trying to um put forth something that makes sense and that, that is something that we, that we really can follow.
Trustee Corringer.
I appreciate that you worked really hard on it. Uh the problem is I think the members of the committee don't have the background that maybe Jonathan and I have on where the language came from and I'm sure Keller doesn't either. And um so you've, there's a lot of things that I would consider important and not want to delete that are on the delete on this version. The uh, the process calls for it to start with the board.
Do you think we could bring it up?
Yeah.
Thank you.
If we can bring it on the screen, please.
Yeah.
Is this the?
Yeah, so that's the amended one.
Okay, so go down to where we start lining out things.
Yeah, okay, and maybe.
Just a little higher, please. We're at the start of the section, yeah.
Yeah, there we go. Process for amending board policies or developing new policies. Okay, the processes we now have it is that um you have an initial board discussion and if the consensus of the board is that the new or amended policy should be considered a draft amendment will be referred to the, to BPAP.
I'm sorry to interrupt you. Could you please scroll down to the edit section? Thank you.
Yeah, okay, so.
Just like a smidge higher to the bolded start of the section.
Yeah, there you go. Perfect.
Okay, so as I was saying, we, we have this initial board discussion and if the board's consensus is that the idea amendment or new should move forward and be considered, then a draft goes to BPAP. The difficulty here was that um it didn't reference the committee, the board's policy committee.
Right.
And we needed to, to put that in. But when you put that in, in the section above that, you're saying um the board may refer a policy to either its policy subcommittee for further development or to the district's participatory governance review process, which I assume is BPAP.
Mm-hmm.
There's a third option. The board has a consensus that says we shouldn't go ahead with this and that is not covered. But it is covered now by saying only if you intend to go forward, do you refer it out. So the change I would make there really is um if after the initial discussion by the board, the consensus of the board is the new amended policy should be considered, a draft or amendment will be referred to, referred to either the board's subcommittee for further development or BPAP.
Mm-hmm.
And that's, the board would decide in that discussion. Then we have a provision that talks about input from BPAP for input within sixty days before it is noticed for the first reading by the board. This was very contentious, heavily negotiated with our constituent groups. Because at the time and, and I look ahead to, it's not happening now but we have a lot of backlog because it was happening and it may happen in the future. We were losing these policies. We were saying, yes, let's move ahead and then it disappeared for a year or more.
Or more, yeah.
So we needed to have a deadline for BPAP to get back to us. And that sixty day deadline was important. So then you can put it up for first meeting, reading. And we agreed to flexibility when it's summer and things are not quite the same uh for participation as it is when you've got um everybody uh in the normal semesters. So um and we also have, the board may request superintendent president to develop uh policies if we want. Let's see. Action on the final draft would be at a subsequent regular board meeting. I think that's correct. Uh during non-primary terms, that's the, the flexibility. It says additionally, any person or governance group proposer may propose to amend a board policy or adopt a new policy through the district's revision request process as outlined in AP twenty four ten. I looked at that and that excludes the community. The community is no longer a part of someone who can come to us and ask for a change in a policy under that AP. And um as you know, we had a community member come to us and ask for a change in the decorum policy, which we considered at some length and, and I think made good improvements. Uh so I don't want to eliminate the community and I don't want to um I don't want to refer it to an AP because the AP is never seen by the board. The bo, or normal, under normal circumstances, the AP is never seen by the board. So somebody has to go looking for it for whatever reason, which we mostly don't do to see whether the whole process works. Let's see, what else do I have here?
Well, maybe, maybe we should table this because uh Dr. Gillett Moore isn't here.
Right.
And she's the head of the policy committee. I'm not the head of the policy committee, so um.
We can table the first reading for sure, but I think it's good to get these feedbacks.
Sure, oh sure. And I'm, uh Dr. Mag and I, I hope you're paying attention. Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I mean, these, these comments, I think, were made in general when this policy came up before, but it was a while ago. So I wouldn't blame anybody for forgetting what we had said then. Uh I don't look upon them as new. And let's see, the AP. Oh, and the AP also omits the board policy committee, does not mention that. Um so when you refer to that, you're eliminating the board policy committee from the process.
Well, the, you mean related to the AP because the board policy committee doesn't hear the, doesn't review APs?
You, no, you're eliminating them from somebody who can propose a change to a policy, which is not something we want to do.
Wait a minute. The policy committee from being able to propose a change to an AP?
At, any person or governance group may propose to amend a board, I'm reading the one that's up there.
Okay.
Um may propose to amend a board policy or adopt a new board policy through the district's revision request process as outlined in AP twenty four ten. And that process does not mention um the board subcommittee as even existed. So.
If I may, um I'd like to clarify that we are in this inauspicious period of adjusting our board policies and administrative procedures while we're adjusting our process for board policies and adminis, we are working on AP and BP twenty four ten while we're working with AP and BP twenty four ten. So the AP twenty four ten is very actively in reconstruction and is out to constituent groups right now. And so I believe that if you're looking at what's on the um, if you're looking at what's posted to our website now, that is out of date. Well, I I just believe that, that that um conflict is, is not um in the proposed updated changes.
Okay, but the fundamental thing I am concerned about is that it's very easy for an AP to get out of sync with a BP. And particularly this one, I would then say bring them both to us at the same time. But I am fundamentally concerned that the things we have now in the BP
Yeah.
are important to have at the BP level and not switch off to an AP level. I mean, that's the comment.
Oh, okay, so uh if I may, just so I, because I'm gonna have to manage this conversation next. You have asked that we um maintain the sixty days, which is easy enough to not, to not cut. You have also asked, the first was um I don't have my notes in front of me now.
That the board discusses it and if it wants to proceed.
Yes, that's, that's a perfect clarification. We gave two options. We should have three. But that's.
Well, it's not three. It's like if it wants to proceed, then it will refer.
We failed to, yes, we failed.
If you don't want to proceed, there's no, nothing happens.
I understand. It's reflected in my notes. Yes.
Yes.
That's easy enough to address. The sixty day limitation, easy enough to address. And the third item, I, I believe is um it is here and you were saying that the AP that you were reading is not in sync with that. And what I'm suggesting is that it, the version we are working on now is in sync with that. So it is here where it needs to be in the board policy. And it will be reflected when we pass the AP twenty four ten.
Okay, but what I am suggesting also is that as a general process, the critical things need to be in the board policy and I also support making board policies shorter. But, but in this case, it's got a serious history of going off the track and, and taking too long and all of that sort of stuff. And I know we are catching up and doing a great job of moving things forward, but there's a lot out there still from the days when we didn't do that. And it can happen again. All of us will not be here.
So are you, are, I'm, I'm wanna see if I understand. Adding back in the time limit, is that adequate? Or are you suggesting there needs to be something additional that is not reflected in here aside from the sixty day time limit?
The proposing of a change through an AP process is a separate issue than the sixty days.
Paragraph that starts with additionally, I think trustee Corringer is saying too much is leaving the board policy and going into AP instead of staying in that paragraph.
I see. If we were to take out as outlined in AP twenty four ten and it simply said additionally, any person, et cetera, et cetera, through the board, district's revision request process. Do you want that revision request process outlined here in the BP? Is that what you're saying? As opposed to referring anyone to an AP?
We, we have it in the AP now in the next paragraph, which is lined out, which is basically um if you're talking about if you're one of that category of people who is proposing a change, categories of people, if you're proposing a change, you come and talk to the board president and the superintendent president about it first. And if they say, good idea, let's move forward, then it would go to the board for that general discussion, et cetera, et cetera.
I believe, oh, sorry. I'm sorry. I, I mis, I misinterpreted the end of your statement, so continue, please.
Did, did that, and did we?
Yes.
Okay.
However, I do believe that one of the things we were trying to do um in the, as outlined in the AP twenty four ten, which you do not have now because it isn't posted, um is that we're trying to make that process actually more transparent so that it, that any suggested revision comes either if it's an AP to the president or if it's a BP to the board. As opposed to what happens now is that these two presidents could determine without any public airing at all. No, the public's voice is not going to be heard on this one.
Can I correct that? That's not true because uh it says they would have recourse to go under BP twenty three forty agendas, which is what happened last time. So they would have, it would, that would not be the case, that they would be shut down by us.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, we, we did want them to have that other avenue. If, if they think it's a great idea, we're not so enthused bringing on a board agenda.
Okay, so it is not, so I, I have two, two questions. Is it not acceptable that any request, we have a request process, uh first, my first question is this is the request process. You go on the website, you push the red button, it asks you to fill out a form. What are you requesting? So A, do you want that description here as opposed to as outlined in twenty four ten? That's, that's the first thing. Secondly, is it objectionable to you to have any BP come to the full, any request to revision or a new, come to the full board and you would prefer that it goes to these two folks for discussion first?
I just don't think that's what it's saying and that's not what we're trying to work with that, with, with.
Right. I, uh, so my question is, we could certainly bring back, keep that in, that the first step is that, that the two, that the president superintendent and the board president discuss it. We could absolutely keep that in. Another option, which was being proposed, and I can't honestly at this point remember where it, or originated from, was any request would come to the full board. I'm agnostic. It's your policy, but I would like to understand whether that step with the superintendent president and the board president is essential and you would like that piece kept back in.
Yeah, I think, but these are two separate issues to me. Like the, they, they're separate and can be flowing into each other. Like the first, if you go to the top where the board, the bull starts, where it says all new board policies shall go to the board first. That's any policy of any origination. And then that additionally paragraph, that is specifically for giving the option to people to propose uh policies.
Yes.
But a lot of policies don't originate that way. Most policies originate because of legal updates or reasons like that. So I think both are needed and they are totally separate ideas.
Right. I agree with you. That distinction of those two paragraphs that you just outlined. My question is about the struck through portion. If we can go back, thank you. The struck through portion that begins with the proposer shall first discuss the specific terms and rationale with the, et cetera.
Yeah.
That, that to me is vague. It says shall discuss. How do you discuss it? How do you get an appointment with these people? How do you, there's, what is that discussion, right? So that was why we, we initiated a publicly available form. What we do next with the publicly available form is your decision. My question is do you want that publicly available form related to a BP to go to the superintendent president and the board president first?
I think we can talk about this offline. I think like the form has nothing to do with the policy because the policy is a policy, the form's operationalizing the policy. So I don't want to get into that. Um but yeah, I think we should talk about this, me and trustee Corringer, uh with you both at another time.
Yeah, yeah, it makes sense. Uh though I, I just wanted to say one thing about a form. I mean, it's, I'm not against it, but there are still people out there who don't use computers, who want to write a letter, who want to talk in person.
Sure, we can add that.
And I think the vision for the conversation with the superintendent president and the board president was to give context to a person who is less familiar with the college about why it may or may not make sense or, you know, if you tweak it this way, tweak it that way. Really educate
Sure.
the person before they decide, I gotta get on that agenda, even if you don't agree with me.
So I, I think having a, a offline conversation about this would be good and then obviously we need to loop in uh trustee Gillett Moore since she is the chair of the policy committee. So.
Yeah, one else.
Yeah, just one comment. I mean, I, I appreciate the uh trying to reduce that column, that, that paragraph that starts with additionally, there was a lot taken out and then it was referenced to AP twenty four ten. And I understand that there's a, a draft being reworked that is not made public yet. Is it possible if it does reference?
Is it possible, if it does reference AP 2410, that we see that when we look at this again, that we can see both of them?
Because of the co-reference, if we're referencing it, that is, that is entirely up to the superintendent president, I believe. I mean, we, I also think we can take it out. I am sympathetic to your, um, to your comments that the board policy should stand on its own board policy. So it's simple enough to just make the board policy a little longer in this instance, as opposed to referring someone out to an AP.
And that would be, in my mind, that would be preferable to referencing 2410 and then muddying the waters by having that particular AP reviewed in a way that APs aren't because they're not the purview of the board.
Okay, yeah, I don't really have a opinion either way, but I just think if we do, if it does reference the new AP 2410, that we see what, what the new AP 2410 is.
Yeah, I think the competing interests for brevity in a board policy versus, uh, having all, your point was well taken. All of it should be here. If it's board related, board policy, if it's policy related, it should be here. Duly noted.
Thank you.
Yeah. The AP used to, I think, or maybe still does, um, focus a lot on what BPAP does. You know, and, and the expectations of BPAP. So, and I think that's a good thing for that.
And what, I'll just offer one technical correction is it, this, uh, policy says after the first reading at a regular board meeting. But it, it, the first reading comes later, like this is the initial discussion, then it goes through the process, then it comes back to us for our first reading. So that needs to be fixed there as well. Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next up is BP 2305, annual organization meeting. This one made some edits since the last, and we'll take all the second reading at once for one motion. But, uh, this one just had some minor corrections or updates since the last meeting. All right. Next is campus security. We've looked at this already, just, yeah.
Yeah, we have. I had comments.
Did you have a comment? Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, I had made comments before.
Yes, you had in the, and, um, the, the language that's here is the accreditation standard.
Yeah. And my concern is accreditation, people are not thinking about our potential liability.
Well, I, I understand that, but the accreditation, when the college is evaluated by the comprehensive team, they're using a rubric. There is a rubric. So there is this, and then there's language about how well the college is meeting it. So there is a way to evaluate whether or not that's happening. But I, I don't think there's another way to say what we're supposed to do as an institution. We're supposed to provide.
Well, I was going to suggest that we say, um, endeavors to provide. Because.
But that's the passive voice.
Yeah. We do our best, whatever, you know, I mean, that's the, you know, it's hard to say, it's much harder to say you didn't try than to say, I do it. And somebody gets hurt and you didn't do it because by definition, they got hurt.
Well, I will defer to the board. I, I, we will do whatever you want. I am concerned because I think that it's not necessarily as strongly committing to what is required of us, but it's your policy.
Trustee Morris.
Could we simply request, um, that the accreditation look at that language with the?
They've already, they have already looked at the language. They just did a complete revision of all of the language.
Then I would have to agree with trustee Korninger. They are not considering the liability of individual colleges. When you say, I'm providing a safe place and something happens, um, and you're sued because I wasn't safe. Um, you're stuck because you said, you said you're providing safety.
What if we said the district shall provide safe and effective resources?
Same thing.
So it says we are, I mean, the next, it is a line that's used all over the place, that we will be doing something.
No, shall means you have to.
We do have to.
No, we don't have to. We try. I mean, in fact, there are some places where we don't.
But it's the accreditation that we have to.
Provides is virtually a guarantee. I want a different word.
Okay. How does the rest of the board feel? Does any, like, let's just do a quick test, like, does people feel like we need to modify it or keep it the same?
I'm in a quandary because, you know, I, I want to do the right thing for accreditation, but I also hear what, um, the trustees are saying. So I'm in a, I'm trying to think of a word. Dave wants a different word, so I'm trying to think of one. So I'm gonna think.
Yeah, and I also support maybe kind of softening that a little bit because that's the way I read it too. It sounded very declarative, like, like we're really making a, 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 a declarative statement. And I think that it should be, I think we should find another word.
Trustee Blackmores.
I agree, however, just to play devil's advocate, the district provides safe and effective physical resources. And so that doesn't necessarily mean that we're guaranteeing safety, but it means that we will have the resources to create a safe environment as necessary. So someone falls down stairs, we can't control gravity. However, do we provide a adequate response to that injury? And I think the words physical resources absolves us from 100% safety at all times. Do we have an effective response to safety issues?
I.
Trustee Richard.
And has, and what does our lawyer say about this? I mean, so if, if your, your concern seems to be a legal, a legal one and, and liability.
It's a thing called negligence per se.
Right. And so.
Standard you violated, it's a statutory or.
Yeah. So has our lawyer like looked at that and, and looked at it through that lens?
No, because this came through the legal updates, uh, through the league and it's an accreditation standard. So it's kind of been vetted, but.
I see.
That's.
Like I said, they're not thinking about our.
What are other colleges doing on?
They're following the accreditation guidelines. So this isn't, um, as controversial in other districts because they.
Just do it.
See it as, you know, what, what the district is supposed to be doing and they accept that as the language. So I don't, or I should put it a different way. I don't know of a district that, that has the same concern as this district. And so again, you're the board, so you can, you know, make a recommendation. I, I just don't know of another district.
Right. I understand.
If we want, trustee Morris.
Is it possible to simply contact the accreditation committee and say, can you provide us your legal advice as to the wording you chose?
There, that is not a standard request. I'm not convinced that they would, could go back and find a specific example. But it's, here's the thing. This is the accreditation language.
Right.
It's the ACCJC, I don't think is going to change this. So at this point, what the, this board needs to do is decide what word you want to use. If you, if you don't want to use this, then you all just need to agree on what you do want to use. Because ACCJC, I mean, I, I will definitely mention it to them. I have ways to do that. Happy to do it. In fact, I'll be at a team training next week. I'll be happy to, to mention this. I'm just not convinced that it will change. So I think you all just need to figure out what you're comfortable with.
But if they don't, if they don't change it, I'm assuming it's because they have a definition of this that's different than the definition that I'm concerned is the prima facie definition of what's on here. So if they say, oh, well, what, what we mean is blah, 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 then I go, okay, fine. We'll use your language.
I, I, I don't think that's gonna happen because that's, this is, so the, the ACCJC accredits more than community colleges. They accredit colleges in other, you know, in Guam and elsewhere.
True.
As well as, you know, for-profit institutions and of broad range. So the wording that's here is designed to cover all the myriad of institutions. So that's, that's just what the, I believe what the policy service of CCLC does is make sure that the model policies reflect the language that's in the current accreditation standards, which is what they've done. But you all have a different concern because the, you know, the ACCJC isn't, doesn't go down to the level that you're all going in terms of concern about individual liability. Like that's, that's not their concern. Their concern is setting standards that institutions have to meet. So, so that's why you all have to make a, a decision that you're comfortable with.
Trustee Richard.
Yeah, one suggestion. How about the district is committed to providing?
It's the same thing though.
That the same thing?
No.
I, I would say it's not.
Committed to, I think is more.
We say that in a lot of our policies, is committed to providing. We use declarative language in so much of our policies like this. Policy BP 3430 prohibition of harassment, the district is committed to providing academic and work environment that respects the dignity and individuals of others. That's one. Um, next, copyright compliance, the district is committed to complying with all applicable federal and state laws. We might not, but we're committed to complying with it. BP 4020 curriculum, the programs and curriculum of the district shall be of high quality, be consistent with the mission of the institution and community college. Like we use declarative language in all our policies. It's a basic way you write policy. It's aspirational. Policies are supposed to be what we're aiming towards, not what's guaranteed the current reality. Also, I don't, if someone falls and trips because of something here, they're gonna sue us regardless. If it says committed to or provides or wishes to provide or any variation of that, you will get sued. And if we had a stairs that was set up incorrectly, we're gonna be liable. Or, and if we didn't, then we wouldn't be. And I don't think the word in a policy is gonna affect a lawsuit. I'm not a lawyer, but I just, based on what I've seen, all the claims we've had against the district, no one referenced this and no one used this as a justification.
It's not currently in the language. They can't reference.
I understand, but all the, all the claims we've ever had on harassment never said, you know, never contested the declarative language we have in our policies. It's just how all our policies are written. So trustee start.
So, uh, Dr. Andrew Jonas, the, the language that, um, trustee Abud is using is committed, you know, that we have in our other policies. That would be consistent with the way that we do policies.
It, it absolutely would be consistent. And again, you're the board. You can make that decision. I'm kind of an accreditation junkie and do a lot of work with accreditation and prefer to stick with the language. But if you all, if that would make you, if you would feel more comfortable with that, then you should do it.
Yes, I understand. Thank you.
Yeah.
Let's, let's move this along. So one more comment here. Let's wrap this up. It's a small decision.
Dozens of ways that I could say that I think the district provides safe, effective, physical resources at all locations where it offers instruction, student services and learning supports is asking for trouble. Bear in mind that if you look at our, um, capital, five-year capital plan, you have two pages of places where we offer instruction. And we don't necessarily pay any attention to the situation at those places. So.
I know, I'm thinking about our parking lots.
Our parking lots are not having a seismic study of all of our buildings and all of those things play into this.
But I have to say, this is a policy statement that drives those, those decisions. Like if it says we provide physical, safe physical locations, then the administration in implementing the curriculum and implementing the programs here, will make sure we provide them at safe, effective locations. I mean, the policy does, is, is proceeding, not, uh, doesn't go after where things happen. It's saying this is.
I understand that you're not a plaintiff's lawyer. It's okay.
I don't need to be because we're not, we're not litigating anything here. We're just saying, what is our policy position as a board? What do we believe we need to do? What do we commit to as a board? That's what policies do. They don't get into the, every situation.
I think that I would feel better with the district is committed to.
Let's, let's do that. Let's move this along, please.
Is that a motion?
That's, let's get a, we'll, we'll, uh, do a motion to bundle it all, but.
Where we use.
The district is committed to.
Is committed to. I think I can, you know, it, it at least gives me some slight greater comfort than is flat out.
Thank you. Let's move on to the next one. BP 5035 withholding of student records. Any comments on this one?
Yeah, unfortunately. Uh, hang on. I gotta get it up. Okay. You, this is the one, Erica, you said that you.
No, I think your question was, the question you had, had to do with, um, directory information.
Yeah, the directory one. Isn't that student records?
No, it's student records, directory information and privacy. 5035 is withholding student records. Those are two different policies. So I think you first said 5035 is.
Whatever. Second, yeah, 5035, yeah.
So, but.
Okay, I think 1535 is not it. It's the next one.
No, it's 5040. Yes.
So 5035, no comments. 5040.
5040, we have, uh, oh, one more comment on the, the security one, uh, access and security. We need to drop the reference to the federal statute because it has nothing to do with this. And it's also a bad citation. It's not the way you would cite it. So it, it's a long list of things that we have to tell students about how we do things. It's not this. So, um, okay. Withholding, uh, student records, directory information. Did you wanna?
Yeah. So, well, I think you need to ask your question in public, what your concern was.
Yeah, I'm concerned with the directory, which says, um, darn it. Says it includes addresses.
Yes.
And, um, there is a requirement at the state level that it not include addresses. And that was my concern.
Yes. So, um, I think this is a moment for, um, the board to make a decision about your, your policy stance because the federal and state, uh, regulations aren't contradicting each other. And if I may, Jason, I think you have the links for, starting with the, um, ed code that you referenced, that's on the policy draft. Section 66093.3, that's the California code. Jason, do you have the link that you could pull that up for us? I sent those earlier today. At issue is the California code, which I think is coming, that does in fact, as part of directory information, that does not include residence address or individual person's course schedules, et cetera. That is the language that you're concerned about. That is in California ed code. Just want a confirmation whether you're gonna get those two links because I can just read if I need to. Yeah. So I'll, I'll start out by just reading. Okay, so this is California ed code. The language in question is section A, number four, as part of direct, so this is, um, what is included from, um, what's required in directory information, part four, as part of a directory that does not include, he stopped. Nope, you were there on A.
There you are.
There you go. As part of a directory that does not include residence address or addresses. That's in ed, ed code. The other link is to the federal code of federal regulations, 34 CFR 99.3, I believe. And CFR 90, uh, CFR 99.3. Have we switched? Yes. Okay. So 99 points, there you go. 99.3. Directory information. If you could scroll down through the first definitions and stop at directory information. There you go. Great. A, directory, if you could stop right there. Directory information includes, but is not limited to the student's name, address, telephone listing, et cetera. So this is, you, you all have a, a decision to make whether you wish to use the more restrictive definition, which actually is a change. And it's entirely your, your decision. It's your policy.
What are the implications of either decision? What are the implications of either decision? Trust, that was my question. What are the implications of the decision?
Well, we would be in violation of the California requirement and we are in California, which says don't. And the feds, also at the top there, you've got directory information means information contained in an educational record of a student that would not generally be considered harmful or an invasion of privacy if disclosed. Frankly, I think at, in this current environment, address, birth date, location of birth, those are all scary things to publicly release.
I'm the facilitator. I was just.
We have already had a situation where a college has been required to provide that information to the feds and they have done it. And there is, it blew up, well, I shouldn't say blew up the college. It is blowing up the college because they're saying, why are we giving that information? As far as I'm concerned, if the state says you don't do it, we don't do it.
Right.
And the, we, if the feds say, we want it, well, we don't do it because it's part of our policy and it's part of state of California's policy. Talk to the state attorney general if you don't want it.
I agree.
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 Can I just add a little bit of context? We don't produce a directory that lists all of the student information in any one place. So it's only when information is requested that we release information. And the information that's directory information is information with, that we are allowed to release without explicitly asking for the student's information, uh, student's permission to release. So if somebody were to come to us and say, can you tell me, you know, X, Y, Z about a student? The only places where we do sort of mass produce information is on things like athletic rosters, the commencement brochure. You know, you'll see on the student equity plan, we list students' names who participated in the, in the work groups. So it's in those types of situations where we produce some of this information and it allows us to include this information without explicitly asking for the student's permission. So we don't produce anything. Part of the policy also says that if we as college administrators determine that it's not in the best interest to give this information out, we don't have to. So just because we can, doesn't mean that we have to. So if somebody were to come to us and request the information for a student, it, we don't necess, we aren't required to. Unless we, unless we have a warrant or subpoena, and then we are required to.
Yeah, yeah.
Trusty Morris.
You can't provide what you don't have. That's your best security. If you have it and they want it and you don't provide it.
But we do have every single student's address. And admissions and records.
Yeah, you kind of need it.
We have to have it. Right.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, I.
I think trustee Blackmire, so then we'll go back.
We gather all of that information to begin with, as stated. It seems like a very normal thing in enrolling in college. Then what is the purpose of direct, what, like, is directory information a definition where they could come to us with a warrant and say, we want the directory information?
No, usually it's, uh, we will get requests like from the news media saying this incident happened. This is who it is. Is this person is an SBCC student? Directory information allows us to say, yes, that is an SBCC student and they attended SBCC from this period of time. Or no, it's not. That's an example of when we release directory information. Directory information also allows us to release information to like potential employers. So if an employer were to come to us and say, has this student completed a degree at SBCC? We would say yes. If we don't have the permission to release directory information, we would not be able to provide that information to a potential employer. It would also limit the information that we're able to provide readily to transfer universities. So they will ask us for information, you know, and we were, we're able to confirm, yes, the student attended. No, the student didn't attend. So in those situations, having the ability to release directory information is also facilitates a lot of things that are in the student's best interest.
Right. So it sounds to me that directory information is, is similar to like an ROI. These are the things that you can just sort of blanket release on my behalf.
Correct.
I think we as a board are going to be looking at a lot of decisions. Do we side with the federal law or do we side with state law? Because California does, is in conflict at this point with the federal government. And so I think as, as trustee Croninger was saying, we're in California. California provides most of our funding at this point. I, I say that we go with the California definition of what has to be in directory information, not the federal one.
Trusty Croninger and then Richards.
Yeah, I would, I would also point out that what our policy says is no district representative shall release the contents of a student record to any member of the public without the prior written consent of the student other than directory information as defined in this policy and court orders, et cetera. Okay. And the directory information that California is saying, don't include your address. I would also suggest that in our current environment, you know, I realize some of this stuff is very useful, but it's also difficult as to who is asking. It's not just the press who may be asking. And if it's a, you know, you don't have to ask a student, it's in our directory, which is what this policy says. I would say telephone number, date and place of birth are also very problematic.
Yeah, that's kind of along my question. So if there's a conflict between the federal and state definitions of directory, does the policy that we have here follow the state or the federal or, or, or?
Our current policy is more restrictive than both. The one we're proposing is to be slightly less restrictive. The, including the addresses is in alignment with the federal definition of directory information. Excluding address, addresses would be in alignment with the state definition of directory information.
And what about date and place of birth?
That's included in both.
I have a, oh, I have a.
Federal and state.
Go ahead. Why did the policy committee choose to put address then in? Like, it's being recommended to us from the policy committee or why did that stay in then? Did discussion happen there?
So there was, there's a general consensus to be as, in, in the legal update that we were provided by CCLC. There's a general consensus that it's encouraged for colleges to be as broad as possible with the definition of directory information in alignment with FERPA.
Okay. Trusty Morris.
Any examples you gave where we would be giving information to the press, et cetera, et cetera? None of them seem to require address.
Those, those specific examples, but we get requests for students for information somewhat regularly.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm missing something there. The examples you gave were all examples where, well, they were a student from this period to this period. They got this degree, et cetera, et cetera. None of it, I think, included a, a request for an address.
Those specific examples that I gave did not include a specific request for an address.
But we do get those.
But we do get those. We do get, we do get requests where we're asked to confirm. And one of the ways that we confirm is to, excuse me, is to align the addresses. It's like, is this the same person? Here's the address that we have. We can say, yes, we have the same address or no, we do not.
Is, do our information include social security number?
No, absolutely not.
That's a whole nother statute.
Yeah.
Yeah, only the admissions and records office and financial aid have access to social security numbers. That's why we use K numbers at City College. Those are very restricted, as is a student's citizenship and immigration status or citizenship status.
Considering how.
Very restricted.
Considering how often students move, I'm not so sure that comparing addresses is a great way to identify that, yeah, that's.
They're not very accurate. Yeah. Trusty Richards.
One other question. So you said that students can opt out to not have this information shared. Can, does that apply to all of this directory information or only some of it?
It's all of it.
Oh, so they could, they could opt out and say, I don't want any of this information shared.
Shared. Correct.
Okay, well, that's good.
That's good. So I just need to clarify then. The decision that's being brought for us right now is to nix the address bullet point or not? Is that what's being asked of us to do?
I can offer a resul.
Well, no, I just want to make sure that's what was brought to us because you all said, like, the board has a decision to make here. Is that?
That was a question that was posed to us.
Yeah.
Because.
By the board.
Because this was recommended legal update language.
Yeah.
But there was a concern about it that was voiced by trustee Croninger. And so I engaged Paloma and Keller about what do we have to have? And that's where the distinction between the federal and the state came about. One is more expansive than the other. So while it's here, you as a board, this is a second reading, you have an ability to say, we're comfortable with this, but we're not comfortable with that because this is ultimately your policy.
Right. I was just trying to say, like, what's the best way we can be, make a productive decision at this point? Like, we've heard all these questions. We've had this discussion.
I think it's an amendment if you want to.
Trusty Morris.
So I would amend the policy to read that we follow state law. Simple.
I think we can't, we have to like make an actual amendment to the language. We can't just say that.
Okay, sorry. Yeah, I don't have.
Or we can send it back. Like, we're not, we can't, we can't, we have to either write the language now.
Is there a timeframe for the, is there an issue about time if we held this over to November?
No.
Okay.
Okay.
I think that's what we should do is let's, if the board is willing, allow us to make, make an adjustment that reflects your concerns and we'll bring it back in November.
Let's do that. Thank you.
May, may I, having raised the original.
Yeah.
Concern. I would propose that in talking about it, you think seriously about, in addition, the telephone number and date and place of birth. Because I think those are things that have become sensitive. I did not see something that required us to include that, but I might have missed it.
Are you asking this to re-return to policy subcommittee or are you asking?
I don't think we meet until December.
It doesn't sound like we need the, I think the board's made its views known, so we.
We'll send it back to policy. Yeah.
You do want to send.
Yeah, I think we should tip, well, I'm, I'm concerned because the chair of the policy committee isn't here.
Yeah, but I think, you know, the board is the whole, this is our, we own this as a board. That, the chair position of the policy committee is just a, you know.
Okay.
It's an administrative position.
We can bring it back with, with recommended edits.
Yeah, that's good.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is fifty-one thirty financial aid. There's just one addition in here. Legal update. And then next is budget management. Not a big change on that one. Okay, so can we have a motion to approve ten point three, ten point four with the amended? Ten point four, ten point five and ten point six. Oh, sorry, not ten point six, ten point seven and ten point eight. So I'll repeat, ten point three, ten point four amended, ten point five, ten point seven and ten point eight.
So moved.
Thank you. Yeah, a second. Trustees started and trustee Richards, any discussion?
Right. So we, we skipped ten point six because that's coming back.
Kind of go.
Agreed on an amendment to ten point four.
Yes, which is committed to. And then two, we're also, ten point two, we're also bringing back later. Okay, if you're voting yes, please vote yes. Yes.
Yes.
You're voting no, abstain. Okay, next is reports information out of state travel. There's Fairmount conferences. We already did eleven point two and then eleven point three student equity plan, which we have a presentation for.
So, yes, it's. Nice president Paloma Arnold. Me again. Do you mind bringing up the PowerPoint for me, please? And I will make this relatively abbreviated and I'm happy to answer questions after. There we go. And there we go. Okay, so this is the first draft of our 2025, 2028 student equity plan. Give me the next slide, please. I want to start. Or do you have the clicker? I can, oh, it's not a clicker, huh? So the way that, I'll speak for a minute about the way that we structured the development and writing of our student equity plan. But I first want to acknowledge the people listed here were the people who were responsible for functioning as a lead for the work groups that we developed to write the student equity plan. So it's Dr. Roxanne Byrne, Dr. Melissa Menendez, Nicole Oldendick, Juan Casada, Dr. Joshua Ramirez and myself. We each led a work group of different individuals and responded to questions in, in requests from the chancellor's office based on different metrics that we'll go over in a minute. Next slide, please. So the process for developing the student equity plan this year, back in spring, we attended a workshop. We did a call out for people who were interested in attending a workshop at Long Beach City College. And the workshop was designed to help colleges structure how they were going to approach and write the new 2025, 2028 student equity plan. We did a campus-wide call out for participation. So we reached out several times to the entire campus community and asked for people who were interested in participating in the writing of the new student equity plan. We got a great response and we formed work groups based on the student equity plan metrics that are identified by the chancellor's office in the student equity plan. Each individual was asked to choose which metric that they wanted to participate and work on. And we assigned the work groups based on people's choices. We hosted a retreat for the student equity plan development in April. And that was, we had a keynote speaker, Dr. Darla Cooper from the RP group came and presented and her presentation was through the gate. It focused a lot on the importance of academic counseling and student education plans. And you'll see that as a theme in the student equity plan. So next slide, please. And then, oh, what's down at the bottom there is after we hosted the workshop, then everybody got to work. We had a little bit of a slow start at the beginning, but folks really started to get to work and look at a lot of this information at the end of the summer and the beginning of this fall semester. These are the different work groups. So the metrics that are identified in the student equity plan are the same as the metrics from the previous student equity plan. Successful enrollment, successful completion of transfer, transfer level math and English, transfer persistence, completion. And then the new metric, if you will, is the completion of a comprehensive student education plan. And the, we were asked to look at the number of first-time to college students who completed a student education plan in their first semester and the number of first-time to college students who, if they didn't complete it in their first semester, completed it in their second semester. So these are the work groups of people who participated in our, our, this is a list of people, excuse me, who participated in our different work groups to complete the student equity plan. Next slide, please. And I, I do just actually want to point out that we had a really good cross-representation of people from across campus, from across different disciplines, departments, programs, areas. We had classified staff, we had faculty, we had managers. And it's something that the chancellor's office actually commended us on when we recently met with them to ask them some questions. So again, the way that the student equity plan is structured, it's organized by metrics that follow the student journey framework. This is a follow-up from the guided pathways who really follows the student journey framework. So again, it's enrollment, math and English completion, persistence, completion and transfer are the different metrics. For 2025, 2028, there was an additional focus, like I mentioned, placed on student education plans. And that was acknowledged because their importance is recognized throughout all of the different steps to enrollment. Excuse me, all of the different metrics. Something that's a little bit different this year for 2025, 2028, we were asked to identify the most disproportionately impacted populations and also consider key strategies for the overall student population. If you remember our 2022, 2025, we were asked to really focus in on certain populations. So this is a change from our, our previous student equity plan. And this, in a lot of ways, is in alignment with the idea behind universal design that if you design for the students who experience the most challenges with our processes, everyone else will benefit from those changes. We were also asked to identify intensive focus. We were also asked to identify intensive focuses. So for each metric, there's actually different disproportionately impacted population depending on the metric. We were asked to look at all of those populations and identify one to three intensive focuses. So for Santa Barbara City College, that intensive focus population, which we saw across almost all of our metrics, was actually first-generation students. A close second to that were male students, specifically male students of color. Then we were asked finally to complete a Vision 2030 alignment. So our Student Equity Plan objectives align with the Vision 2030. Next slide, please. The goals of the Student Equity Plan overall for the state of California are lofty, eliminating disproportionate impact and fully closing equity gaps. So those are wonderful goals and ones that we continue to work towards. And then again, what I mentioned earlier, that the idea is that we design for the students who experience the most challenges that the general student population will find more success as well. Next slide, please. These are the definition of the metrics. So the successful enrollment, I won't read these, I'll let you read the definitions of the metrics that we have. These are, again, defined by the chancellor's office for us. The cohort that is used is first-time-to-college students. And then again, the comprehensive student education plans is a new metric, and that's the one metric where we use internal SBCC data. For all of the other metrics, the chancellor's office actually determined the disproportionately impacted population. And in the NOVA system, which is the system that we have to use to submit our plan, those populations were already identified and selected for us. And if you read the Student Equity Plan, you'll notice that I included a graph in each metric, kind of highlighted in yellow, that those are the populations that were identified by the chancellor's office. And then beyond that, some of the work groups chose to include additional populations as well, and those are listed below the first graph. Next slide, please. Again, so this is a little bit more information about the data, like I just shared. They were, from the chancellor's office, the data was included for us for the disproportionately impacted populations. The Office of Institutional Research and Planning reviewed all of this data for us and presented it to each one of the work groups so that we could really understand the data that we were reviewing, understand the different populations that were being discussed, the disaggregated data, and then we worked with that information to develop our strategies in response. The next slide, please. These are the identified disproportionately, disproportionately impacted populations for each one of the metrics. The star next to some of those populations indicate that those were the additional populations that the individual work groups chose to include as well. The ones without are the populations identified by the chancellor's office for us. Next.
I have a quick question. What is DSPS? Slide under completion.
Oh, DSPS, males are male students who participate, who are part of the disabled services and programs, I'm not saying that correctly, disability services and programs for students. Next slide, please. These are our next steps. Some of these we actually started this week, so we are on tour with our Student Equity Plan. We've taken it to Dean's Council, we've taken it to Executive Committee, CPC, Senate here for the first read, it's going to ASG tomorrow morning, Student Services Leadership, we'll see it tomorrow as well. We're hoping to take action at CPC the 21st, Senate the 22nd, bringing it to an All Student Services Retreat on October 24th. One of the reasons that Student Services is specifically listed in there is not just because I helped write the plan, but because a lot of the strategies really impact Student Services, so it's important that they really understand what's included there. And then I apologize, the November date for hopeful action by the Board of Trustees should say November 13th, not November 11th. And then we're required to submit it to the chancellor's office on November 30th. Next slide, please. And I think that's it.
Thank you.
And then you'll see the second attachment on the agenda is the actual Student Equity Plan itself. We're going to be routing two different opportunities to provide feedback. So we will route a Google Doc of the actual Student Equity Plan, where if you're so inclined, you're welcome to make comments directly on the document. If you would prefer not to have your documents, your comments there for everyone to see, we're also gonna route a Google Form and you can submit comments or suggested edits on the Google Form, and that will be more confidential for just the leads to be able to review.
Trustee Croninger.
Would it be possible to have a Word version? I have to say about half the time I get a link to a Google Doc, it says access denied, and that's kind of it.
We could, yes. That would probably be one just for the board.
For a red line, yeah.
Then the rest of the college would use a Google Doc. Yeah, I can also make sure that the accesses, that you have the correct.
I don't know whether I'm getting a yes or a no.
It's a, yeah, you usually just have to make sure you're logged into your City College email.
I am.
No, same happens to me, but it's okay. It's okay. We don't work here. We don't work here.
We can send.
Yeah.
A document out.
Trustee Richards.
Thank you. Well, I want to say thank you. This is obviously a great deal of work, and I appreciate the efforts of you and the steering committee and the team that put this together. I'm actually encouraged, you know, reading this, that, you know, there are a lot of things that we are doing and can do that looks like it'll have a big impact.
Hopefully.
And I really, I really am hopeful that, that we will have an impact. My feedback about this, I guess, is more reading it as a layperson, you know, like just as a standalone document for the first time. I really appreciate your presentation because it actually answers a lot of the questions that I had when I was reading it without this context, you know? So, you know, for example, the, I didn't realize that all the metrics that are in here were already identified by the chancellor's office. So that's information that, as a reader, I'm like, you know, I'm thinking, I'm looking at this as like, you know, I'm looking at it from a perspective of someone who's just interested in knowing what City College is doing for its, for equity and what's the plan and wants to read about it and not knowing that this was, you know, required by the chancellor's office, that there's a whole rubric that, you know, and that there are questions, you know? So the very first page, you know, there's a reflection question, you know, 2,500 characters max.
Yes, we're very restricted on characters.
Yeah, and, and I guess I'm reading that like, that just was my first clue, like, I think someone's making us do this, you know? So, you know, and then, and then there's another question like later, you know, what is working well? And then it kind of just goes into the rest of the plan without me understanding what the context was. And so I guess I'm just sharing some feedback that, you know, maybe there could be, you know, some of the information that you provided in this presentation was actually really helpful for me to clarify, you know, just as I'm thinking about what this plan is and where did it come from, why are they doing this, all of that? And so, you know, the fact that, and, and for example, the metrics, I see that the metrics were all required, but the DI populations identified, is that something campus by campus or is that something that?
It is campus by campus, but the chancellor's office identified based on our data that we submit to the chancellor's office, which populations were most disproportionately impacted per metric.
I see. So we were given that information to do, but it was based on data of our, okay, okay. See, this is all very helpful. So I don't know, you know, maybe, you know, there can be just some more context included with the plan itself, I don't know. I, I see that this is being provided to the chancellor's office, so they don't need all that because they asked for it, so why would they include that? But, you know, I, I guess I'm just looking at it from the perspective of someone reading it for the first time, which, you know, so.
Researcher is going to say something.
Yeah.
Sure. Do you mind if I answer really, just really quickly first? So I just want to offer that that's a great input and it's something that I think that we can expand on in the executive summary, because the executive summary is really the document that is supposed to be kind of the public facing. So that's great feedback to hear and something that we can include. And I'll also just add really quickly, sorry, Keller, I'll also just add really quickly that we are very restricted from the chancellor's office. I mean, literally, our strategies have to be less than 500 characters per strategy, which is like three sentences. And so we are very restricted in what we can include and how long it can be, which is a big difference from our previous Student Equity Plan, which was 80 pages long. This one's only 25 pages long. And I think that's a good thing, but it will also mean that we're going to have to, and this is something that we've already discussed as part of the Student Equity Committee, is that our implementation plan is then going to need to be really an active, working, you know, kind of meaty plan so that we can actually discuss how are we gonna, how are we gonna do this? But I'd be happy to include some of that feedback in our executive summary.
Thank you.
Just very briefly. In addition to the executive summary that Paloma mentioned, I would like to give you all some comfort also. I think it's the nature of plans generally. And we have a section on the IR website that we're developing now that is our institutional planning section that has, it does currently house plans, but we're developing it more for a public-facing, as a public-facing site to provide that context. So when it lands on our website, it will have that context so that the average layperson will get there, say, oh, I want to read the equity plan. They'll have that information, about 500-character limit, and, and, you know, how is this situated in the larger work of the college? I just wanted to give you that comfort.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions on the plan? And I guess we can give our feedback remotely between now and then.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And I know it's a lot of work to come up with these plans to comply with the chancellor's office. It's not easy, so thank you all who did it. Last is the Consent Agenda. That's sections 13, 14, 15 and 16, 16 and 17. Anyone want to pull anything from the Consent Agenda? Okay, can we get a motion to approve the Consent Agenda?
So moved.
Thank you, we have a second.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on the Consent Agenda? Not if you're voting yes, please vote yes.
Yes.
If you're voting no, absailing. Okay. We don't have a closed session to go back to, and I think we have two meetings left this year, November 13th, and our new December 18th organizational meeting. Does anybody have any future items to bring up? No? All right. Well, meeting's adjourned at 7:43 PM. Night, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yay.